Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on January 26, 2016, City Council Chambers, 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, to consider the following matters called to order. We have a quorum present, Ms. Gilliland is on the way. We are called to order. I am glad that a lot of people who are not here got the message from reading the agenda that we're going to have an executive session to start with in Mike's and my effort to try to save some money for the city. And we identified through Facebook and everything else we could think of to let people know that was going on. So, the Bastrop City Council may, or will, meet in a closed executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, to discuss any and all the following matters: Section 551-071A and Section 551-0712: consultation with attorney concerning potential pending threatened or contemplated litigation or claims, including but not limited to Pine Forest et al. versus City et al., Van Diver versus Bastrop BOA, Watson versus City of Bastrop, SOA administrative hearing on the city's LP GWD pending permit for City well number one, and on matters upon which the attorney has a duty and responsibility to report to the governmental body concerning the same, and/or any other matters posted on the agenda pursuant to Section 551.1.129, which provides that all governmental bodies may use a telephone conference call to conduct a private consultation in a closed meeting of the governmental body. One or more attorneys representing the city may, will attend the above referenced closed executive session by telephone. B, Section 551-072: deliberation regarding real property regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, disposition, or value of real property. And C, Section 551.O-74: Personnel Matters, City Manager. We stand in executive session. The Bastrop City Council will return to its regular session. I want to state that I appreciate the patience, especially those who didn't catch on to the way the meeting was posted tonight. Mike and I had a brilliant idea, or we thought it was brilliant, that we would save the city a bunch of money by having J.C. only present for executive sessions, and we'd do those first so we could get her to go home and get off the clock. But that was before, we posted this before we heard the council talking on Saturday at our retreat, at which time they were pretty clear that they want J.C. here for the meetings, and you know, we'll see how that goes in the future. So this is a one-time-only experiment, and anybody that didn't get the notice about it, I apologize for your having to wait. We will continue with our meeting with the pledges of allegiance, and I'll call on City Manager to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Please remain standing for the invocation. When asked, "Your Holiness, many people in the Western world want to combine their spiritual practice with social and political activity. Do you feel that these two aspects are connected?" The Dalai Lama replied in words of Buddhist wisdom, important for us to consider as we begin this meeting tonight. He said, "I feel that the essence of spiritual practice is your attitude toward others. When you have a pure sincere motivation, then you have right attitude toward others based on kindness, compassion, love, and respect. Practice brings the clear realization of the oneness of all human beings and the importance of others benefiting by your actions." Please be seated. We have a presentation. I'll call on Mike to introduce our speaker.
Mike, Mike, sir.
Yes, the area office come down and give the council an overview of what's ahead of us, and we have with us Mr. Dill and Diane Schultz tonight. We appreciate you all coming down and appreciate you staying by so we get the executive session taken care of. Thank you.
It should be on.
Okay.
Raise it up as high as you can to get to your face.
All right.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate you having me here tonight. I just wanted to visit with you a little bit about the upcoming 71 projects and give an update on the current status of the projects.
I'm going to ask you to pause for a moment until our friendly train goes by. I think it's safe now, thanks.
Okay, this is a, just a schematic showing the different projects that are scheduled for 71. Down at the bottom is the current project that's under construction at Tahitian. Then we have another project that's planned at 95 to build an overpass, 71 over 95. And then we have another project that is in conjunction with that project to... I'll certainly try. This project is to build a bridge over the railroad that's part of the ramp, the access ramp, for traffic that comes down 95 and is turning onto 71. So this project and this one will be built at the same time. Then there's another project looking at building frontage roads and bridges over the Colorado River, and that's these two projects right in here. Whenever we developed the schematic many years ago, there was some things that, well, let me back up. We did a value engineering study once we started working on all of this corridor. And as part of the value engineering study, and the city was an active participant in that study, we looked at what the original schematic entailed, and we looked at how we could improve it. As a result of the value engineering study, there were several things that were identified to improve upon the original schematic. And let me bring up another file. This is starting on the west end. The original schematic had the, where the ramp is now to do the turnaround underneath the bridge and come back on. What we are proposing to do as a change to the schematic is to make that instead of a, just a exit ramp off of the frontage road. These are the main lanes for eastbound and westbound traffic, and then this is the new frontage road that will be built. What we are proposing to do is to make this more of a intersection where you have to slow down and get onto this turnaround. It should improve the traffic flow a little bit better for the frontage road. The next change is, the original schematic is shown down here, and it shows two lanes for the westbound main lanes, and three lanes on the proposed frontage road. What we're proposing to do is to add a third lane on the front, on the main lanes, so where there would be three lanes. Basically, this lane would connect the entrance ramp from 95 with the exit ramp that's in close proximity to where the existing ramp is today. Now we come to the portion that has the most changes. The original schematic is shown down below, and as you can see Lover's Lane is right here, and it would be a one-way roadway underneath the front, underneath the main lanes. And then this would be a one-way frontage road on the westbound side. In green, that's showing the proposed changes. Basically, this would remain as a two-way roadway underneath the main lanes. It would be one-way here, and then if you wanted to come through Lover's Lane and go toward 95, you could come over and cross over the existing at-grade crossing and continue on around that direction. Also, as part of the change, we were, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, on the next sheet it will show the crossing at Water Street. But in this, in this way, I think that we will be improving the mobility for the traffic to get through. One thing that you'll notice that the original schematic had an at-grade crossing for the frontage road down below. What we are doing here is taking the frontage road over the railroad pass, or railroad crossing. There were several reasons for this. One, in discussions with the railroad, in order to have another at-grade crossing down here, we would end up having to close several crossings within the county. And it's not a one-for-one type thing. They would want to, the amount of traffic that would be going across this at-grade crossing, they would want a number of crossings that added up to that same traffic volume. So it would be several crossings within the county that would have to be closed. So by taking the railroad, taking the proposed frontage road over the railroad, it doesn't increase the number of at-grade crossings. This is still going to be considered one at-grade crossing, even though today, or the original schematic had it just in one direction, now there's going to be two-way traffic over that same crossing. And the final change would be the, the original schematic had an at-grade crossing for the frontage roads at Water Street, and what we're proposing to do is raise the bridges up that's going over the Colorado River and going over Water Street. And there was two reasons for this. One is with the, in order to tie into the existing Water Street elevation, it puts the river, or the bridges in the floodplain of the river. And in the last storm event that we had, where we had water getting close to, or increased over what we had normally experienced, it would have put those bridges in the water. Those would have been impassable in the last storm event. So by raising them up, it should put them close to the same elevation as what the main lane bridges are today, and should help with mobility during storm events. The other thing is it allows access then for people to continue to use Water Street to get into the downtown area. So those are the changes that we're proposing to make to the schematic. Now, in order to get a schematic revised, we will have to go back through and have public meetings, and we're planning to have those starting in March. So we'll invite public comments and address any issues that are brought up in those public meetings, and then get the schematic revised and proceed forward. At this time, we're hoping that everything progresses, and that basically we've started the construction at Tahitian, and we'll be starting the construction at 95 before Tahitian is finished. And our plan is, is we'd like to just continue on, that it'll seem like one continuous project until all of this is built. Once it is complete, I believe that we're going to see a big improvement in mobility, especially for the local citizens here in Bastrop. So if y'all have any questions concerning the project, be glad to take them. Yes, sir.
Well, still, as you come south on Water Street to the, to College Street, do you still are able to go under the underpass and, but you can't turn left on College Street going, going east, or you have to continue up the next street?
Okay, if you're coming from town on Water Street...
Yes, sir.
This would be a one-way frontage road here. Now, it's going to go under the frontage road at this point, so you would be able to go underneath all four bridges to get to this side. And then in order to access the frontage road, you'd have to go back up a block over to the, to the frontage road.
Is there a sidewalk in, on the new bridges built into that plan?
Well, we haven't started the design on this because the first thing is to get the schematic approved and get everything addressed. But our plan is, is yes, to have everything with pedestrian accessibility.
That's very important to us because it links our, links our two sides of town, and having that as bicycle and walking would be really helpful to a lot of people. Anybody else?
Wait, Gary?
No, I don't have any questions.
I don't have a question on this issue, but I do have questions on other Tech dot issues whenever you're ready to talk.
I may call on Doc then, and we'll come back.
No, I think you make a good point, Mayor, about the pedestrian and bike crossings because we do have quite a few of our citizens that do walk across the existing bridge, and some of them that don't have other transportation. So it, I hope that that's, carries a lot of weight in your evaluation when you do put that together.
This is obviously a big issue for us and the main thing on our plate, but we had conversation, several conversations in here about transportation in general in the area, and so I'm going to call on Councilmember Schiff because he's got another one.
Okay.
Okay. What I wanted to talk about, came up at a previous meeting, was the, the traffic that happens here every Friday, every Sunday, especially on holiday weekends, that 71 gets backed up horrendously. And there's some other traffic light areas in town that seem unbalanced. And I mean, years ago, when the former Tech dot engineer was here, I asked him about that, "Oh, we've got the greatest computers in the world that run these traffic lights, and I'm looking at, you know, just my own logic of how I'm an engineer, of how these lights could work better," and I'm saying, "You need another computer or something." But the observation that I make, that seems obvious to all of us that live here, is, well, first of all, there probably not many Tech dot people from Austin drive down 71 on Fridays and on weekends, but besides that, the observation I see is that if you're going eastward on 71, you're going to have long, long, long waits at those high-traffic times. If you're coming westward, you'll make it through almost the first light every time. And to me, it just doesn't make sense that we stop people that are going eastward for five to 10 minutes, people going westward are stopped for whatever the cycle of a light is, for a minute. And so it seemed like the timing of lights could be substantially improved to balance out how long you wait in each direction.
Yeah, are you referring to the frontage roads or to the main lane?
I'm talking about 95 and 71 is the worst intersection in the county, is by my eyes anyhow, and it stacks up, you know, from 95, it backs up past Walmart regularly on the weekends, Fridays and Sunday afternoons.
Right.
And if you look at what's coming down the hill by Buc-Ee's, the traffic at Buc-Ee's stops, oh, you know, 20 cars, they all get through on one light, and they don't, you know, you don't wait if you're coming at either Tahitian. Now Tahitian probably, right now, has more issues because of the construction, but even when the construction wasn't, you know, when the construction wasn't happening, it wasn't really a problem at Tahitian. But 95 is really a disaster if you're going eastward.
Okay. Well, of course, the construction, once it's completed, should alleviate the problem as far as the main lane traffic.
All right, but we're years away from the completion. I'm talking about today. Is there somebody at Tech dot that could come out and look at the timing of these lights, come here on a Friday after, Friday afternoon at 5 o'clock, come on a Sunday at 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and just observe what's going on at these lights? It doesn't make sense that you've got a mile of backup on this side and a block of backup on the other side. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Well, except that the capacity of the intersection is exceeded. It's, it's beyond what it was designed to be.
Obviously, obviously, but I'm saying, if you, you know, part of, my logic says that if you let a light be green longer, you're going to get more cars through if you do fewer light changes than if you do more light changes. Because at the change of lights, you're, people are stopping there, you got to start up again, you know, the momentum of traffic works a lot better if you can leave a longer green going eastward. I'm just saying, why don't you run a longer time on the eastbound lane so that the people going eastbound, that has a better chance of clearing, and just stop some of the westbound traffic, let them wait a couple minutes instead of getting through it in 30 seconds.
Well, we do study it, and in my opinion, we've got it pretty well optimized as much as we could.
You haven't been here.
No, I study it a lot. I live here, I drive through it every day. But basically, that, that intersection is beyond its, its design capacity. That's why we are doing an overpass there to...
All right, so I'll just continue beating my head against the wall. So let's change the subject.
Let me say one more thing, and that is, you're correct, if you increase that interval for the green, for the eastbound traffic, it would improve that direction, but then the traffic is going to stack up more on the other ones.
All right, but here's what happens, because I, my office is the first building up the hill, or the second building after the, after the funeral home, it's Lakeside Professional Building, so I drive that, that hill and see that intersection a couple times a day at least. And again, my observation is that if you could let the eastbound traffic run longer, let the, the westbound traffic, if you watch it, the light turns green, the 25 cars go through, and then it sits there, on the busiest time, on a Friday afternoon, there will be 30 seconds with one or two cars going through westbound, and the eastbound will be a mile back. Doesn't make sense. Take a look at it.
Okay. I doubt that it's 30 seconds because I don't think the intervals are, I mean, if you, but anyway, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. And then the other one is if you're over at the intersection by Lowe's, Burleson Crossing, if you're coming from Lowe's, I never, because I live in town, if I leave Lowe's, I go to Highway 20 and I get on 71, because if you get in the, in the lane going 304 southward or, you know, what's, the Burleson, what is that called, that street there?
Edward Blakely. I'm Edward Burleson, that's...
Edward Burle, if you're coming down Burleson, that backs up about two blocks, every light change, day and night, doesn't matter what time you do it, there's always a line, and you can never get through on one light. But if you look at all the other directions, all the other directions, clear the intersection on one light. So those are, those are two issues.
I feel like that is an intersection that needs to be looked at and improved. I agree with you.
Well, those were my gripes of the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doc, I just want to say that I concur with Councilmember Schiff. I moved from 95 and Chestnut to Tahitian Drive, so I've gone from bad to worse and backwards and forwards, and so, and I drive that every day also, and it is, it's just a nightmare. I just, I try to come through town to Chestnut and, you know, to cut through, and that gets even bogged down. So I, I would seriously appreciate it, and I know my neighbors would as well, if you would look at it on those busy times and in the evenings, because it's just, it's just, it's terrible. It really is bad.
I understand. Anybody else? Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Diane, thank you so much.
Thank you. We also have our monthly report on the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. Executive Director Sean Kapatri.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Community. How are y'all doing this evening? It's our monthly report. We did hold our regular meeting early this month on January 11th, early in the month due to some scheduling issues later in the month. But LA Electric Supply came and gave their presentation about their project in the park, and that should be breaking ground as soon as their permit clears. The Planning Department, they are really excited about being in Bastrop and the opportunity to supply the electrical needs, the parts and pieces to the projects that are in the pipeline. We also discussed briefly 903 Main Street, and we have a public hearing related to that scheduled for February 22nd, the potential disposition of that property. We have some environmental work going on in the building currently in preparation of that. The mayor did ask to have on the agenda the EDC looking at making a recommendation to the council about an onsite hotel for the convention center. Staff gave two recommendations. One, either the board could recommend to the council to look into that, or the council could send that down to the BEDC, and it was the voice of the board that if y'all wanted us to look at it, that it would come from the council to the BEDC, and so no action was taken on that. We did have a brief discussion about the committees and how we use committees at the BEDC. Typically, the board chair and board will appoint ad hoc committees related to specific agenda items, and then within internal and the staff will have informal committees that we form around very specific projects that we're working on that could be very short, could be very long, and we're going to do a better job at letting the board know when we have these working groups, task forces working on projects. We are in the process of redesigning the billboard at Highway 71 and 95. We'd originally sent that out to our graphic designer in December and pulled that back and have outsourced that to Proof Advertising, looking at using our color scheme and our copywriters' work in conjunction with what Proof does for BMC to kind of have more of a cohesive feel of all of the billboard campaigns. We're waiting for Proof to evaluate our material and get back with us with some recommendations. That vinyl is in desperate need of replacement, and so we are anxiously awaiting Proof's work. We did, one of the outstanding agenda items that the board probably will be considering in February is looking at some business park infrastructure. We still have some money outstanding from the 2013 bond issuance. Bevco is putting together some cost estimates on some very specific work related to some projects that are in the pipeline, and so most likely the board at the February meeting will be looking at those designs and those cost estimates related to a project and project demand within the park. The Bastrop and Cedar Creek High School Career Day, we were notified last week that we have a conflicted date. We are waiting on the new date for that, and so as soon as the school district clears a new date for us, we'll have more updates coming for that, and be getting the committee that worked on that last year, that Kay and Kelly were so involved in. so involved in, started again in getting that project moving forward. Our business retention and expansion program, we have started formal visits here in January, and those are going really well. We'll have monthly reports of how many formal visits and informal visits that we're making with companies moving forward. We're real excited about getting that program launched, and the companies that we've visited so far are extremely grateful for the fact that we're reaching out to them and getting their feedback and input about what's going on in our economy here locally. We have started some pre-development work on the Bastrop redevelopment program, a new program that the board funded for this year. Excuse me. We were waiting to, for Main Street Director to be, permanent director to be hired, but with that being delayed, we've gone ahead and started the pre-development work, and we'll be forming an informal committee around that before we take it to the board and getting community input on that project, as well as board input from some members that have expressed interest in participating in that process. Mike gave an update on the Main Street CIP project. The board made it clear in that project that, back in 2013, that we funded the project, and that was our level of participation, that there was no need to come back for the board to bless that project in any way, shape, or form. And so, really, that project moving forward is on the council and any other boards and commissions that Mike or the council sees to engage on that. We do have the two public hearings on the 22nd of February with us potentially funding the YMCA. That will be, the public hearing notice will be published Thursday and open the 60-day public hearing. The public hearing, or the public notice period, and then on February 22nd, we'll hold the public hearing. And then 60 days following Thursday, which is actually a Sunday, which JC and I will have to have a conversation about actually closing the 60 days. It'll probably be on that Monday following the 29th. So that is our update. If y'all have any questions, feel free to answer them.
Questions or also comments, I think, if you have anything to share with the board via Sean or with him directly? Thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you, Council, thank you, City Manager.
We have no proclamations. Anne, do we have any citizen comments requests? Let me say that, to make it easier for y'all to know, or me to know what's going on, and for y'all as well, the Mayor Pro Tem is going to keep track of time. And when you get to 30 seconds, 30 seconds, he's going to put this up on here, or hold it up to you where you can see it, and you know it's time to start winding down. And when it hits the three-minute mark, we'll ask you to please be seated. We talked at our city council workshop about the importance among ourselves of respect and following our own rules. And so, we're, we've added a little touch to our application to speak that reminds the speakers as well. Becky Wumble.
So did you get that idea for that signage from our forums?
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe not.
Maybe not. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Mike, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. We accomplish so much more for this lovely community when we all work together. And one thing I want to talk about is the Chamber Initiative that we've got going on called Bastropvotes.com. The sole purpose of this initiative is to promote the vote. And it's really become a genuine effort through our cities and our county. And part of that is the partnership that we have with the city and the school district. In working with Mike and the IT department, we've been able to livestream those forums. And because of that, we've also provided a great teaching opportunity for the students of Bastrop ISD. We had students that were able to run the cameras from both Bastrop High School and Cedar Creek High School and government students who got to see the democratic process. We've had two forums so far, one on the 14th and one on the 25th. And I just want to give you some statistics from the TV station that the city has. The Commissioners Court, when it ran, and we only had about a week and a half to promote that forum, 138 people watched it online as it was going on. We've had 349 YouTube views since the forum and since it got launched. We've had 3,538 engagements on the BTXN Facebook page. Last night was the Sheriff's Forum. We had a capacity crowd. We had 220 seats in there. We probably turned away 50 people and had to livestream it out on a monitor. So these numbers I'm going to give you is one livestream with 25 or so people sitting out watching it. But we had 310 people watching it while it was running. We've had 52 views since lunch today. And we don't know how many Facebook posts yet, because it was just today. But your staff and your IT department, particularly Colin and Andreas, have done a tremendous job. Like I said, it was a great teaching opportunity for our students. And this is just one email I received today. It says, "Thank you for providing the candidate forums to our community. Especially, thank you for providing the livestream for the forums. This service allows voters who cannot make to the forums the opportunity to learn about our candidates. Plus, the archived stream is a great asset." So, thank you for providing the funding. This is a great communication tool. The things that we need are its radio, TV, and newspaper. We had the newspaper covered. Now we have TV. So, thank you for having that asset for our community.
Thank you, Becky in the chamber. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you so, thank you so much for your service. I know it's a tough job a lot of the time. I don't generally engage in the political process too much, but I found it at my doorstep, so I felt like I had to get out here and speak. And being an employee of the City of Bastrop also, I'm, I feel like it's important to demonstrate to other City of Bastrop employees that it is okay to come and speak and participate in the political process and speak up for your neighborhood and your neighbors and what you believe in. It was kind of an experience last meeting, seeing how things work. And I really want to emphasize that, you know, I know you guys deal with a lot of different types of things, you know, hot fund spending and signage and stuff, and a lot of really cool stuff. And this city has done some very impressive things. And I want to impress upon you that when it comes to development and growth and zoning, and especially when it's right in someone's neighborhood, that it really does deserve the utmost scrutiny and highest level of accountability and utmost attention to the citizens of the City of Bastrop. You serve us. We are here to provide you with the input and our thoughts and feelings. Sometimes we might not be able to present ourselves well enough, but just that we're here, I think that should be enough to let you know that we really care and we really sometimes go out of our comfort zone. And please, please pay attention to the citizens of the City of Bastrop and give us what we deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have no proclamation, we have proclamations, we didn't have any. Any announcement regarding comprehensive plan? Kay or Doc?
I understand we're running a little bit behind. Does Melissa or Mike know anything about that?
Turn your mic.
I'm rewriting one of the chapters on facilities, and hope to have that out by the end of the week, get us back on track.
Since we posted the agenda, we had some unfortunate news. Mickey Duvall of our librarian is unable to be here tonight because he's not feeling well. But he wanted the public to know the sudden death of Lisa Crick, one of our board members. And a very sad day for us, as the board members that serve our community are just so vital. And she had served very well for some time. And he wanted to express that view in public, and so I'm doing it for him. We reached the consent agenda. Items A through, A1 through A5, does anyone have anything on there that they would like to discuss separately?
Mayor, under announcements, if they're not printed, is it okay if I make them?
I think we, I think we got advice from the city attorney that we ought to get them posted. And I had, I took, I took the liberty to do that announcement for Mickey, so maybe I've broken the rules. Do you want to give us some advice?
Generally speaking, announcements are supposed to be posted in advance. When it's a death notice, a sudden thing like that, I think there's an exception that can be made. That's a public announcement that can't be posted in advance because it's not known in advance. If it's a business matter, I do think that the Open Meetings Act requires it to be posted in advance.
We should not use this for purposes of something that's not, I mean.
A general announcement of a board member of longstanding passing, I don't think that that's a serious.
Okay. Otherwise, we need to get those announcements in. You want to announce something? Please get it into Anne, we'll work on it.
Okay. Or under citizens comments, since I'm a citizen also, I guess I could do that.
I think we've heard that, that it's just not, citizens comments is for citizens, not for councilmembers, because we've got access. And I appreciate your persistence and your trying, Councilmember Jackson, but I'm going to have to rule that out of order. The, anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? Item A4, approval of a resolution calling for an establishment procedure for a general election in Bastrop, Texas for the May 7, 2016 election. I'm reading that because it's, I'm required to read it, it's also a very important item. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? I heard Willie moving and Gary seconding. Will you call the roll, please, Anne?
Mayor Pro Tem Delorosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Thank you all. Item B, or section B, item B1, this is a second reading, ordinance granting a zone change from SF7, single-family residential mine, and A/OS agricultural open space to PD residential plan development for approximately 90.91 acres within A11 Bastrop Town Track, located north of the railroad track on the northwest corner of the Riverwood, Hawthorne, and Carter Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as part of the Piney Creek Bend, setting out conditions and establishing an effective date. Ms. McCullough.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the second reading of the item based on your recommendation from the last council meeting, excuse me, you instructed the city manager and staff to get with the developer to discuss potential road improvements, as well as other things that were discussed at the meeting. And with that, this attached memo summarizes the discussions that we had with him in regards to the road improvements on Carter Street, that they will work with us in the future in the subdivision construction plans and plating process for the enhancement of Carter, though willing to dedicate the additional right-of-way that is needed for Carter Street and construct the sidewalks to provide equitable participation in future reconstruction of Carter Street, provide improvements as required to accommodate the storm drainage, and also mitigate the impact of infrastructure and construction traffic. With that, staff did include a response to an email that we got ahead of time, and with that also the ordinance that we have. And again, this ordinance does limit the development to 170 lots. There was a question regarding this. I pointed out the section, I thought I'd go ahead and point it out again. With the concept drawing that they have, they do have many lots of different lot sizes proposed, but with that, it is still a schematic, so through the plating process, that will be redefined. But they are hoping to adopt these standards as part of the lot size component with that. And these are standards that they have modified. They would be called the Piney Creek Urban 50 and suburban 60, that would be allowed for this development. And again, these are minimum lot sizes that they're allocating, and they are allocating a mixture of lot sizes. But as asked and I think questioned here, it is true that they could have potentially a 60-40 mix of those lot sizes. 60% of the 170, which would be 102 lots, could be the smaller urban 50 lot size, and then 40% could be the larger suburban lot size. With that, it does still follow the same schematic as before, having the open space and trails and everything else that's a component of the plan development. Again, this is Exhibit B, that's part of the land use plan. Again, this is hard to see on here, but the yellow does represent essentially where the homes would be built, and the green and darker green is kind of the open space requirements in general, lot layout. The last page shows a preliminary lot layout. And again, as discussed before, the actual lot sizes will be obviously refined when we have more information during the subdivision process.
Mike, did you want to say something?
I just want to clarify the point that Ms. McCullough made. The binding document that will govern this development is attached to the ordinance, which is the standards set forth by which this will develop. And I do think it's important that the council focus on page 2 of 4, where it talks about the residential types. And though it says a minimum of 50 lots, but no more than 60%, that means 102 lots could be the smaller-sized lots, with the larger lots remaining being 68, bringing you up to the 170. And that is not what was reflected in the conceptual plan.
Okay? Kay?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Gary?
Well, you know, I've heard from a lot of you that are in the audience today and a lot of others that aren't here. And I've done a lot of soul-searching on this, on this issue. But first, before I get started, I wanted to just say that this request for a revision in the zoning of this area is not, it's not a choice of the council to either do a subdivision or not do a subdivision. What we're talking about here is, the current zoning is SF9, which is 9,000 square foot lots. The developer claims he can get 173 of those on this property. With the new plan development that they're proposing, it allows them flexibility to run roads a little bit differently and make different-sized lots and, you know, change up from what the standard lot size is that's proposed. But it doesn't eliminate the subdivision. And, you know, I hear a lot of grief and aggravation of disturbing what was a quiet neighborhood by more traffic. It's not our choice, it's not the council's choice whether that traffic is going to be there or not going to be there. It can be SF9, or it could be P, the plan development, or it could be something else if that was proposed. But if a developer is going to spend money to buy a tract of land to develop, and they're going to put money into dividing it up and putting plans together and bringing it to councils and bringing it to the planning department, they're expecting to build some houses there. So I'm trying to make it clear that it's not our choice whether they build or they don't build. It's our choice whether we accept a revision of what the existing zoning is or. zoning is, or we approve a new zoning request that they're asking for. Now, that said, that kind of qualifies what the decision is. Now, it's, the city, you know, has responsibilities to the citizens of Bastrop to look at, I mean, the reason that we have zoning requirements at all is that so you just can't do anything anywhere you want to do it, that there is some consistency as you go through a town, that there will be areas that are zoned commercial, and those are where you can put businesses. And there will be places where it's residential, and that's where you'll put houses. If you don't want to live next to a commercial business, you shouldn't buy a house that's right next to a commercially-zoned piece of property. Now, obviously, this property is zoned residential. There's not a commercial component here. But the zoning rules nonetheless talk about keeping a theme together, keeping a scheme of a township going from neighborhood to neighborhood. And, you know, we like the town that we're in, most of us. I like the town I'm in. And, you know, we are resistant to growth. When it's our neighborhood, it's fine if it grows, you know, somewhere else is wonderful. But we don't want the growth in our neighborhood because we like the small amount of traffic that we have, and I appreciate that. But we have a piece of property here that is indeed zoned SF9, a piece of property where if the developer wants to put 173 homes on that site, other than those restrictions that might be on it that are code-related as far as infrastructure requirements, the street standards, the widths of streets, and all those things that will define how much of the property gets used up for streets and utility easements and those types of things, beyond that, the developer can pretty much, as long as he's meeting the guidelines that the city lays out, he can put his 100, whatever it is, houses out there. And we really can't stop that. We heard from our attorney, said, "Well, you could stop it if the city wants to buy that property and compensate the owner, the owner of the land." I don't think the city is, one, is in a position to buy the property, and two, we don't want to set a precedent here that says to developers, "Well, you just don't even think about coming to Bastrop because the city's going to shut you down. We're not, we're not open to having new houses built in our town." You know, we've been through some serious, some, several serious fires and flooding, houses that have been destroyed. People want to rebuild houses. They want to, there are a lot of people that lived out in these burn areas want to live in town now because they're fearful, they don't want to live in the pines again. So there is a bigger demand on residences inside, inside our city limits and inside the older parts of town. I'm going through kind of a long narration here, but I'm trying to paint a picture that the community, I don't think, wants to stand that we are universally against growth in this community. One of the things that our committee put together on the Form-Based Code was talking about how you can adapt land use to be appropriate for the area where it is, that you don't just set some rules that are absolutely so rigid that they don't use common sense. And, you know, we're trying, at least I'm trying, and I think the rest of the council is trying to make some common sense out of all of this. You know, we've heard issues about the streets, are the streets compatible, are the streets not compatible for the amount of traffic. We've heard the traffic impact assessment that was done that says that the traffic won't get beyond a Level B or something as it rates from A to F or whatever it is. But, you know, does that mean that we're not going to have issues because of the width of Carter Street as brought, mentioned by our, my neighbor here, Councilman Del Rosso? You know, those are issues, and those are things that we talked about at the retreat this weekend that we ought to, as a city, the city leaders, be thinking about. Well, how do we accommodate not only the growth that would happen with this development, but what's the next thing that happens? What if a development happens on the other side of Piney Creek, and they put another set of houses there? And what happens if, and so we start looking at, well, you know, what do we do with Mesquite Street? Do we put that through? Do we widen Carter Street? One of the things that struck me as I looked deeper into the layout that was proposed, again, I know that this is just schematic, the plan, I don't know if you can put that up on the, on the screen. But one of the things that I noticed about this little schematic plan, and again, it is schematic, they can just change this 100% if they wanted to, as long as it meets the zoning and ordinances of the city. But a couple of things that I had noticed as I looked at it is that there are three entrances to this subdivision as proposed. I know originally they started with two, they're up to three. And I've heard the complaints about, "Well, we don't want this traffic on our street." Well, one of the things that I think about as I look at this is if you'll notice, two of those three streets line up, are in perfect alignment with Juniper and, what is the other one that's lined up with Oak Street? So you have, you have two streets that, when you come out of the subdivision, you have the opportunity that you can either go straight onto Juniper, onto Oak Street, or you can turn right, you can turn onto Carter Street. You know, I think, at least at those intersections, I, you're gonna, the people driving are gonna have an option, "Well, I can either go straight or I can turn." It's really easier to go straight probably than it is to turn, because I have to turn the wheel if I turn. And a lot of people are going to go straight unless they find that, you know, the traffic is easier going to turn. But so, what you're going to have here is you're going to have two of those intersections where a lot of the traffic is going to go straight across and cut across onto Oak Street, cut across onto Juniper Street. But, am I on the right, do I have the right connections, whatever streets they are? Anyhow, but my thought was is that if we're going to be as fair as we can be to all the people that live on streets that connect to this subdivision, that there should be alignment on every street, that every street north of the tracks should extend itself into this new subdivision. Because if it doesn't, the people, when you come out and you turn, if you go to one where it comes to a T, everybody, just about everybody would be, would be turning right, I would think, unless you're going to go up 95. Most of the traffic is going to go toward downtown, is going to turn right. Once you're on Carter, it's unlikely that you're going to turn again to go through one of these other north-area streets. So my thought was, it would be fairest if all the streets cut through, and it would divide the traffic as evenly as it could possibly be to all the streets of the north end of town, including Carter Street. Another observation that I made was that the, you know, as it, as you look at the proposal of 50% of the lot area would be small lots, and 50, 50%...
No, 60.
Well, no, yeah, I'm trying to get the numbers. It was 50% of the number of lots would, what was it, the area? I forgot how it worked now. Anyhow, ends up where we thought it would be no more than 50% of the lots would be small lots, because the small lots are smaller in areas. 50% of the area is small lots, which is now 60% of the lots. My thought is, is that to keep some consistency of the neighborhood, to try to maintain like a larger lot standard that would be more consistent with the downtown area, that some of the lots indeed could be made smaller lots. But I think that a higher percentage of the lots should be made to be larger lots. And potentially, you know, that might impact the number of lots that could be built here. But I think it would, it would provide for better consistency throughout the neighborhoods of Bastrop, and in fairness to the people that live, that bought their house with a certain-sized lot, that would like to maintain, again, it's back to that zoning, that you're, you're putting these zoning rules together to try to allow for some consistency, so that you know that something that doesn't fit the neighborhood is not going to be built in your neighborhood. And so, all of this, I say all of this because I feel tonight that we should, we, the council, should send this back to the developer and say, "We don't agree with the zoning, the rezone proposal as it is proposed." That if they want to come back with a more palatable proposal that has larger lot sizes, that has better street alignments to promote better distribution of traffic onto the existing streets, that then we would reconsider our position of approving a rezone into a plan development.
Mike, did, can you just summarize what, if we made any progress about the traffic situation?
Well, traffic is, will be, the street issue, as was shown at the last meeting, is addressed and specifically spelled out in our subdivision regulations, both the abutting streets and the internal streets, and proportionally what has to happen. What is here before the council tonight, and what the council needs to decide is, is the proposed land use in this PD appropriate and compatible for this tract of land in this area of town?
Okay. So, traffic may be a concern to a lot of people, but now's not the time to be talking.
And we, we cover that in our subdivision regulations, and with the TIA, that spells out how the proportionality will break down and all that formulas. And if we feel, if the developer feels that we've assessed too much of the proportionality, he can appeal that to the council. That's all spelled out, that whole process is spelled out in our subdivision regulations. But we're not into the subdivision at this point. We're into a land use issue and the appropriateness of this development in this neighborhood. And that's why I wanted to bring up the issue that the conceptual plan is not, is different than the document that you're going to be approving, which allows, I don't know if they'll do 102, but they could do 102. And I thought that was a very important issue that the council needs to be made aware of.
Okay. Kay, I see you leading forward. You want to speak?
No, I just wanted to be sure. There is a letter here called "An Illustrated Tale of Several Cities" that lays out some really good suggestions about slowing traffic should this happen. And I just want to be sure, Mike, that you have that. So when you do go into the subdivision, we can have a look at that. It's the back, the last paragraph. Thank you.
Kelly?
So, to clarify, they, the developer can put more than 170 homes?
No, he...
Is that the maximum he can put?
Maximum he can put is 170. But of that 170, he can do up to 102 of the 6,000 square-foot lots. So that's why I'm saying, the issue that's before you with the document that they're asking you to approve, do you feel that that, that development with that ratio and that land use for that PD is compatible for this tract of land in that area of town?
What's the status of the infrastructure? We've had a lot of questions about water, sewer, groundwater.
We have, there's clearly a floodway, and they'll have to do a master drains plan, as was discussed at the last council meeting. Your post-development runoff cannot be more than your pre-development runoff. But again, that is done through the subdivision and the drains plans that are reviewed and checked before those improvements are put in.
And I have one further question that was posed to me, and I, I'm not sure if you can answer this, maybe our fire chief can. The five-foot setback on the sides of the homes, I was told, is a concern because it's, it's a potential fire hazard. We are prone to fire, and fires jump small spots. Is that true?
Mike, do you want to address that to the chief, or?
Yes, chief, if you want it there.
Chief Waldis, would you come forward, please, and answer Councilor Miguel Lance's question, if you can?
Can we state it again?
Yes, ma'am, please.
The, the way that these smaller homes, if I'm reading this correctly, the way that they will be sited will be with a five-foot, with each house having a five-foot space between the fence, so five-foot and five-foot, so 10 feet between houses, which means roofs are closer. Is that a fire concern?
It, for me, yes, it is. However, a lot of that's going to deal with the construction materials that are being utilized to build these houses, whether it's all brick or there's some other type of siding that's being used that can help prevent the spread of fire from structure to structure. But if you look at current subdivision homes that are being built inside the city right now, the 10-foot or 12-foot between roof tip to roof tip is kind of common.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So it's not a particular concern? It's just a concern?
It is a concern when the house is on fire, yes, but that, that's...
You're a D.
I don't, I don't mean to make, make light of it, but yes, truly it is. But that seems to be the standard in, in construction, in subdivisions that are going up in this, in this community and other communities now. So it's five feet off of the property line, but typically 10 feet between house, house to house.
Right. That's, that's what it, that's what it says.
Is that it, Kelly?
That's, that was the question I had.
All right, thanks. Willie?
Well, back when Hunter's Crossing was, was, was being developed out there, the, the fire chief spoke at that time that, especially with two-story houses, that didn't want to allow the five-foot or the seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks because of the rooftops being, being so close where if you had a fire on a two-story building, that it could jump to the next building. So that was an issue that we tried to remedy out there at Hunter's Crossing by allowing two-story houses being built so close to each other. Okay?
Mike, will these houses have to pass a fire standard so that, like the chief was talking about, they would have to be made of materials that would not be so dangerous before they were passed?
Well, we're getting into some very minute details here, and I, our building codes cover the materials, and we periodically update our building codes to enhance the building materials that are more fire-retarded. But, you know, I can't address a specific issue, and I'm, again, want us to focus on the issue at hand tonight. And the issue that, again, I want to stress before the council, is, do you feel that this land, this proposed land use change is compatible, this tract of land is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? And that's what you really need to, to consider in your decision-making process.
Kelly?
Can I ask, Melissa, the surrounding neighborhoods, the closest ones, what are they most consistent with? SF7?
The majority of our housing in our city limits is zoned SF7, single-family, 7, residential. I will say, Pine Forest Unit 6, so developed property that's zoned SF9 is Tahitian and Pine Forest Unit 6.
So the ones closest to this development are more consistent with SF7?
Everything within this area is zoned SF7.
Thank you.
Doc? I voted last week to, you know, to go ahead and move forward with the development because we've discovered, you know, we've discovered as council membership was saying that the development is going to go forward either way. But then I've had a lot of citizens contact me, and I've had a lot of thought on this. And so, my question, I guess, is, with the development, and since it's a zoning change, that seems to be the consideration, could the development in its current status continue with the same zoning, or is that zoning change something that definitely has to happen? I mean, we know that the development... I mean, we know that the development is going to go forward in some way or another. But if we change the zoning, if we, or if we leave the zoning the same, could the same standard of development be, could it occur at that point or not?
No, this potential, the reason why he's asking for the planned development zoning is to cluster these lot sizes as well as utilize different setbacks for these standards. That was shown in the previous chart. So, no, SF-9 would not allow the development as proposed to occur.
But yet a certain level of development could occur, I mean, as we've obviously have discovered by, because of the way it is, excuse me, the way it is. So, I'm trying to, and I know, I guess I'm a little bit behind the curve, I'm trying to see what the major differences are, if you can summarize, I don't know if you can, between the two zoning changes, if it was made into a zoning change?
The primary, the developers here, he could probably elaborate some more, but from my experience based on why, quite honestly, most of our residential development that's come before us in the last 10 years has been planned development. If you look at Riverside Grove, Pecan Park, this development today, those have all asked and gone to planned development zoning classification. It's primary for, primarily the setbacks between the structures.
But I don't think Riverside Grove is a PD.
No, I'm sorry, excuse me, thank you, Mike. Hunter's Crossing, I meant to say, you're right, Mike, thank you. Riverside Grove is SF-7, single-family, 7. Have gone to PD is primarily the setbacks, not only front and side setbacks, but also can be lot size, too. And that would be lot width. So, for example, this development's proposing some 50-foot wide lots. And, well, single-family was the primary designation for those other planned developments, but single-family's a 60-foot lot width requirement. They're proposing both 50 and 60s, but SF-9 requires 70-foot lot widths.
Gary, did you want to make a motion? We've had a fair conversation since then.
I need to ask another question.
Okay, all right. Kayden, Willie?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. One of the big concerns is drainage. Now, it's my understanding that the planned development will have more permeable area for the water to go into the ground than the SF-7. But, I mean, SF-9, thank you. Firstly, is that true?
I haven't seen an actual lot layout, but yes, I would say with this development allowing honestly smaller lot sizes, they're able to cluster them some that would allow more open space, that would be, you know, appropriate, allowed to drain.
Mike, can I ask you, this is putting you a bit on the spot, but could you let us know what you think the most important, maybe top three considerations between SF-9 and PD, planned development, might be for us to consider?
Well, I think the difference is, in our zoning ordinance, you have your SF-9 classification, which stipulates your lot size, your height of your house, your setback requirements, your maximum lot coverage, your parking regulations, and any other special requirements for each category, SF-7, SF-8, and SF-9. When you go to a planned development, you have what you call your base zoning district underneath, and then you allow special conditions such as is being asked for in this document. And that's, you're giving some special considerations to that lot when you approve a document that they have laid before you that talks about the lot sizes that they're going to put in, the lot design standards. They talk also about that they're going to require a special fencing in the rear of the property. They're going to make some areas available, a substantial portion for trails and parkland. You would not see that like in your SF, or your SF-7, or your SF-8, or your SF-9. But you're also giving up some other things like the lot size. You're making, you're allowing for a smaller lot size than would be allowed for in that district. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Are you through?
Yeah.
Willie?
I'm just going to make a comment again. I think it was, this was a 90 acre project, so, and it says on page three or four that the parkland dedication was approximately 47 acres. So, I'm doing the math, it was 43 acres. And I don't know how many houses that, you could put three to four houses on an acre, I was told, so that's, it's either 129 or 150. But that's, the issue tonight is the zoning. And it's currently zoned SF-9. And I'm going to reach out and say it's probably was left like that because it was compatible to the subdivisions across the street from Persimmon all the way to Magnolia. And now, I mean, and clearly the neighbors are here in process of the planned development. And Mike, I agree with you, what you were talking about, when the appropriate time was to talk about the streets. But I think it's bad, it's bad to rezone the property, plan development, and you come back down the road and you give a cost to the developer what that street's going to cost. And if he walks away, you're stuck with the rezone piece of property that the neighbors didn't want to begin with.
Right.
And we're still sitting there with the property, whereas if you leave it SF-9, the next person that comes in and develops that property is SF-9. You've already got the numbers worked up with Carter Street is going to entail, by the cost of, who's going to entail the cost, well, the city and the developer. You know, the deal is, it's a zoning and the neighbors are sitting here telling you in front of you that they're happy with the SF-9 versus the planned development.
You make a very good point. I mean, there's no, if you change the zoning, somebody else can come in and do this development. There's, you're not, there's no guarantee that this person will be the person developing. I can't guarantee that, nobody can guarantee that.
Counsel, I have eight requests for citizens' comments, but I'm inclined not to call on them until there's a motion, because there is no motion on this, the thing dies and we can go home. Because I'm, I think that most, almost all of these are people we've heard from before and they're going to oppose it, and then there's the developer. So if there's a, if there's a motion on this, I'm going to, in a second, let's continue with citizens' comments. If there's not a motion, then we'll move on to the next item.
I'd make a motion to deny the zoning request and leave it as SF-9.
So you're moving that we, okay, so you're moving to deny it versus-
Deny the planned development zoning change.
Which would be the same as not voting at all, is that correct? Our, okay, so is there a second to, a motion to deny?
I'm not sure I understand it. You're saying no, no to what is written here?
The motion would be to vote, essentially, the motion as I understand it would be to vote no, instead of pass it on second-
Right.
-a reading, instead of just not passing it on second reading. Willie wants to make it more, more clear, or I'm not sure what, how to describe that, but he's saying, instead of failing to pass it on second, we turn it down and then it's done.
I made a motion to deny the zoning request.
Right, the zoning request for the approval of the second reading.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So, the motion is before the council is to, a motion to deny the second reading, changing the zoning classification of the above referenced property.
All right, so, everyone that wants to speak, I hope you understand what the motion is. Glenda Dayton. Willie will, again, let you know when it's up to 30 seconds and will, he'll tell you to sit down, I mean, he won't tell you, but the sign will, we don't tell people things, but the sign will tell you when to sit down.
Okay. I'm Glenda Dayton and my husband and I live at 106 Bush Cove, which is right across Riverwood Drive from the proposed subdivision. And while we're concerned about the traffic, as a lot of other folks are, our primary concern is the impact on Piney Creek and the Piney Creek watershed. And we certainly understand, my husband has done plenty of developing, that the drainage and runoff issues will be settled in the subdivision rather than the zoning portion of this process. But given that Piney Creek is our largest, our town's largest watershed, and given that the role that the creek plays in the city's vision for an extended trail, trail system, in our opinion, we believe that Piney Creek should be considered at every step in this process. When LCRA created this map for the watershed for our town, it was created around 2004. And I'd like to read you two sentences that they used to describe Piney Creek at that time. They said, and I quote, "Fortunately, there has been little encroachment on the floodplain by urban development, except for a mobile home community at the north end of Main Street. The channel of Piney Creek is stable despite the fact that it contains potentially erodible sandy bed and banks." And that assessment may have held, but it was totally wiped out during the Memorial Day flood and the Halloween weekend flood. Particularly, and this is the part that I can see, particularly in that one-mile stretch that stretches from the low-water crossing on Riverwood, which is the southwest corner of the proposed subdivision, to one mile down the creek when it enters the Colorado. That area, that one-mile stretch has had extensive damage. And first, to illustrate that, the city's about to begin two significant drainage repair projects due to the erosion on the east bank of that creek, in that one-mile stretch, on either side of my house. Second, the creek itself is, the entire stretch, the one-mile stretch is clogged with fallen trees. And do we have that picture that I sent you? With fallen trees, railroad cross ties, broken pieces of culvert. And that is impeding the flow of water. As you can see, Jane Hunt took these photos. It's impeding the flow of water and it could even increase, lead to a greater flooding hazard at the low-water crossing, at the next flood. So, we appreciate your listening to us and we hope that you'll factor this consideration into your decision, today, tonight, or whenever it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Bob Rogers?
Counselor Mayor, I've been in contact with y'all, I've spoken with these.
Can you pull it up a little bit, Bob? You're a little taller than the last one.
How's that?
That's great.
You know, one of the things is, you know, why do we need a zoning change to start with? You know, just, excuse me, to help the developer, what? SF-9 is more in common with SF-7. Y'all talk about numbers, the developer says he can get 173 SF-9 homes and 9,000 square feet lots in this. I took the numbers, I didn't bring them with me tonight, but I took the numbers and did the average size lots times 170. If you divide 9,000 square foot, you're going to get 166. I mean, that's simple math. I understand the street configuration and all that may make a difference, but how can you get more lots that are bigger in the same amount of space as you can little ones? I'm sorry, math doesn't, show me, okay? The other thing is, whatever happens, this development going forward, I would like to see another traffic survey done or study. Because the one that was done before only showed three spots on Carter Road. And this is at the end of the trail, this is the, when you're just going into the subdivision. And I've been talking about how they're going to get through there and all that stuff. A good survey would show, which I've studied traffic surveys in my career, you don't just put three spots at the end of the road and say, "This is a traffic study." I'm sorry. You've got to get where the traffic's moving from, you've got to have other points to do that. Y'all had a gentleman engineer here that gave a speech at the joint P and Z and council meeting, somebody like that, I believe, would come up with a better survey. The other thing that I was going to bring up, which we could bring up in the subdivision part, is where this 26-foot wide street come in for the subdivision. It was mentioned in Exhibit J or something of the deal. 30-foot, as we know, is like on the north part of Main Street, curb to curb. If you've got two cars parked on the street, you're not going to get two cars down it. And I talked to P and Z, when I talked to them, and I said, "Y'all need to revise these, these rules and regulations we currently got." I've visited subdivisions that had little bitty houses, like what this development is proposing. And if you widen the streets, you can get on-street parking on it. And like I said, the developer knew coming in what the rules and regulations are, he needs to develop in them. We don't need to change this for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Gina? Oh, there you are.
Hi, I'd just like to say that I've looked at this development and I think it is concurrent with a lot of the smart growth standards that are being touted in the development today. And that is to have clustered homes and lots of large spaces that people share. So, what you see, even though it's not more homes, it's not really more traffic, it's the same number of cars up and down Carter Street or whatever street they access, it's just a smaller lot. And it's what we're seeing happening all over the place now. So, I think it's a wonderful development.
Thank you. Stacy Woodruff?
Hi, I'm Stacy Woodruff, I live at 404 Juniper. I've spoken on this before about my concerns about the traffic coming through Juniper and the other cross streets. And it's still a concern for me. And, I mean, traffic has already gotten worse on my street since they redid, since they redid our street recently. There used to be dips on our street, they were kind of the stealth speed bumps. Nothing better in this world than people not paying attention to the dip signs and you're listening to them bottom out because they won't slow down in a residential street. Maybe I'm a little twisted, but hey. I'd love to have them back, honestly. But, anyway, the other thing that I was, that I was wondering about, you know, they say that they can fit, that they can fit 173 homes in there if, at SF-9. I saw a plan of it plotted out with, at SF-9, and it had the entire, the entire property covered in a grid, in a grid fashion. But then he was, the developer was saying that people don't want that anymore and that people want open spaces and that sort of thing. So, if people want open spaces, they're not going to put 173 homes in, on this property. They're still going to want to build the open spaces in the park and the, and the community areas and that sort of thing, and still have the larger lots clustered together and that sort of thing. They're just going to have to do it on larger lot sizes. Those, they're not going to get 173 homes in there. They're just going to have to, they're still going to be able to build a neighborhood. They're just going to have to do it on larger lot sizes. And, and not, I mean, because people, people are still going to want those amenities. It's not a matter of being able to cover the entire property with the, with the SF-9 property sizes and, and leave no, no open spaces, no, no green spaces, none of that. As the, as the grid pattern, I don't know where the, where that one is, I haven't seen it, but, or where it went. But, I don't, I don't think they could get it in and still make a marketable subdivision at 173 homes at SF-9, if that makes any sense. I think, leave it, leave it like it is.
Thank you. Margaret?
Ken, can I ask Melissa a question before she speaks?
Yeah, sure. Margaret, hang on a second.
Is there a grid that shows what it looks like at SF-9 somewhere? Or a schematic or a layout?
Yes, the developer did do a schematic potentially showing what could be on the property there.
While Melissa's looking for that, may I ask another question, please?
Sure.
Okay. If this were turned down, if this PD were turned down tonight- Um, if, if this were turned down, if this PD were turned down tonight, could that developer come back and ask for it again or another developer? Is there some sort of, um, limitations in time for requesting?
I think there is a time limitation. Six months, isn't it? I'm, maybe, or more than that, or a year? Willie, Willie says it's a year.
A year for what?
Before they come back again for a zoning change.
For the same developer or any developer?
For the same schematic, the same essential plan that they're, they couldn't ask for the same thing again.
Before a year?
Correct.
Okay.
But if they made some modifications, could they come back?
Substantial enough.
Their change, yes.
Again, what Ms. Brown's saying is they'd have to make it substantial enough that it, it would warrant a, a change for you to look at.
Well, then, I would make a warning to the council that if we vote this down and we're asking the developer to go back and come back with a better plan, we're gonna make it very difficult for him to do that. I, I.
We're not asking that. The motion on the floor is to deny it. I asked you if you wanted to make a motion based on what you were saying at the end of your talk, and you didn't take me up on it.
No, no, no. Well, because I wanted to just let it, if, if we don't, okay, the question, I guess, goes back to JC or Mike. If, if we don't approve it today, is that the same as denying it, and they, they still can't bring it back? Or can we make a, then, do we need a motion to open the door for them to, to put a better development together?
I would, here's what I would say. I would say the motion on the floor is to deny this thing, and from your position should be to vote against it so that you can make your other motion. And I think you could tell what you're gonna do if you can persuade others to vote it down.
Could you just go, I'm sorry?
That's a discussion I'm, I'm ready to have at this, at this point, if, if you're ready to hear that discussion. My discussion would be, I think we should just table it, let it ride. I, if, if we need a motion, I'll make a motion that says, "Send the developer back to the drawing board. Come to us with something that works, that's more compatible with the neighborhood, and we'll consider it."
I would second that.
I would say, we have a motion on the floor. It wasn't a motion, 'cause we still have a motion. Mayor, remember?
Hang on, we agree. Hang on a second, take a deep breath. We have, we're working on Robert Sewell's order. I'm gonna let Doc weigh in. There, there are procedures for Gary to do what he's trying to do. You wanna explain it, Doc?
Right. Since we have a motion currently on the floor, we can't propose another motion until this one is either, um, taken away or voted down.
Unless it's a motion to substitute, which you could do. You can make a motion to substitute your motion for this one.
I'm not changing my motion.
I'm not talking about.
I'm asking you. I wanted to change.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, let's, let's, we, we agreed that we were gonna talk one at a time and all to, to each other. So, if, if you wanna make a motion, if, if, if you wanna phrase your motion as a substitute for the motion that's on the floor, you may do that.
I will move that we substitute that motion for a motion to let, to table it, or to, not to table it, to, uh, send the, send the developer back to the drawing board to come back with a better proposal.
So, your, your motion is to substitute for the motion that's on the floor, what you just said?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
I will second that.
Okay.
What you've got is a motion to instruct the developer to go back to?
The motion, the motion, the motion is to subs- Willie, Willie, please, please. The motion is, the motion is to substitute for what we're dealing with, for Gary's motion. If you pass Gary's motion to substitute, now what's on the floor is not the original motion, but the motion, uh, to refer, or to, to, I think that's your word, refer or defer, or some, some word like that. So, the motion isn't to vote, the motion isn't to defer. The motion is to substitute for the original motion, Gary's motion. And if it passes, then we will move on to discussing Gary's, Gary's motion. Do I need to say it again?
Can, can we ask the developer if he's even willing to consider this before we discuss this any further?
Um, I think, as, I don't think that, Doc, is a motion to, to substitute debatable?
I'm just trying to say, did we, did we get a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we've got a second on that. So, we have the original motion, we have a motion to substitute, um, so we can have discussion.
Of, of whether we substitute or not. So, your question, I've forgotten who asked it, somebody down here. Your question is, can we ask the developer to come talk so you can help decide whether or not you wanna substitute the motions? Is that correct?
Well, it's, there's no point in voting on a substitute motion if he's not willing to, to come back with different terms. He, he may wanna stick to these. We should know that first.
Mr. Singleton, you wanna address that? You can, you can talk as many times as you want to, uh, tonight. We, we need to get some clarification. And if, uh, if you're not sure what we're talking about, I will defer you to, uh, Mr., to Councilmember Schiff. 'Cause he knows what his, we've got, Mike's working on getting the exact wording down, but the substance is in his head over there. Do you think you understand it?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm not sure, what I understand is he's offered a substitute motion.
If, what we're deciding is, if, the real, the real substance of what we need to find out from you is what will happen. Do you have any idea? Could you tell us what would happen if we were to eventually pass a motion saying we wanna defer and keep working with you along those lines?
Uh, yeah. Are you interested in going forward if we do not approve your planned subdivision tonight, but say, "Go back and come back with a better plan," or are you, you ready to give it up?
It's a dangerous, tempting question. Um, we started this process in May of last year. We made it to Planning Commission in September. We went through two workshops. I can't tell you how many meetings and discussions we've had with your staff. We've never drawn a line in the sand and said, "Absolutely not." What we have continued to do is, is, um, as you pointed out, we've offered additional entrances. We've made additional connections to the green bill. We've done all sorts of things. We've never been offered constructive criticism. What is it you're looking for? All we've heard is you have too much density. We're less than two units to the acre. We've heard you don't have enough open space. Half of our site is proposed as parkland. Um, you know, we, they keep saying we have tiny lots. Our average lot size is 8,700 square feet, almost 9,000 feet. Uh, they talk about a five-foot setback. You can tell we don't have a lot of regimented lots. Those are minimums. It's not suggesting that every lot would have a five-foot setback. The, the larger lots have a seven-and-a-half foot, which is straight out of your ordinance. We'd be glad to continue to work with this council, your planning commission, your staff. But where we're really frustrated in this process is, um, we feel like we've offered, we've given, we've compromised, we've given, and we don't feel like it's, it's really been a reciprocating process. But what nobody wants to talk about, that it's probably time to talk about tonight, is, you know, in straight zoning, um, the, the half of the site that you see as parkland, it, that, that, that doesn't occur in straight zoning. Your staff confirmed that tonight. A conventional approach to this process would be to go in and the first thing they would do is, is a preliminary drainage analysis. We've done that. There's about 20 acres of, of additional land between our lots and where we believe the true FEMA floodplain is. We'd cover that up with lots in a conventional lotting scenario. I don't think that's the best thing for this tract. I never did. We've known that for a long time. We've never proposed that, 'cause we don't think it's the right thing to do. We've been committed to doing a good project that responds to the market needs of this community. We've tried repeatedly to do that. We've given it our best shot. This is a, a, a much more creative approach and plan, and I think you pointed out at the last meeting, a very different plan than y'all have seen in Bastrop in a long time. We're committed to that process, and.
If I might say something, you know, I like the idea of the plan development of, you know, not the standard grid, you know, a, a more interesting design that allows for green space and walk paths and. I, I think what we're, what I'm looking for is sort of a compromise, and of course, I wasn't involved in all the planning department meetings that you had. And, um, but I'm thinking that a better mix of, of fewer smaller lots with, with more larger lots would satisfy the community around that you've done. Uh, you've made an, an effort to keep the, the actual load down. I mean, I, I, again, I don't know what the, a lot of that property that you're giving back as parkland is floodplain, and so it's, it'd be very difficult to build in that area anyhow.
No, sir, that's not correct. And, and, I, I mean, there's been a lot of misinformation through this process, and that's where, um, that's where our frustration builds from. This entire area down through here is the area that I'm talking about that's not in the floodplain. We've done our preliminary drainage analysis. This has not been a, a, a haphazard approach. We've done our homework. We know what they are. We've been very frustrated by, um, you know, a TIA wasn't called for in the process until much later. We did that. Now it's been challenged, and it's been suggested that it wasn't done appropriately. Well, you know, your staff reviewed it and confirmed it was. They, they had a, the professional that was here for your joint workshop, he reviewed that TIA, and he confirmed all of the assumptions, all of the traffic counts, and all of the conclusions of that.
And I'm not challenging, I'm not challenging that at all. The only thing traffic-wise that I feel like is maybe a little bit more fair to the community is to try to divert.
Sure.
More traffic down more streets, which some of the people are gonna like and some of the people are gonna dislike, but.
Well, and, and as you pointed out, I mean, we added another connection to this. Um, historically, adjacent neighborhoods have, have resisted too many connections. We started with two. We gladly went to three. Um, but back to your original question about the floodplain and, and knowing where that is, um, again, we thought that setting back from that floodplain was a more responsible way to propose a development. The development right across the street, and ironically enough, the people that are concerned about the creek built right on the creek. I mean, right on the floodplain. I understand them being concerned about that creek, 'cause they built right on that creek. That's not what we're proposing to do here. Um, but to suggest that we'd have to give all, up all this land anyway is just a false assumption, and I'd please like to dispel that rumor, 'cause that's not the case. Just in our preliminary studies, we made some very conservative assumptions on the flows that are in Piney Creek would be much greater. They, the assumed flows were taken from much further down at the river and, and applied to this part of the creek when we figured out there's about 20 acres up here. So, I would suggest there's quite a bit more land. So, um, to suggest that it's only that is, is, is just not true. So, when people talk about, "How can we get the same number of lots on the same kind of area?" We're not talking about that, because in a straight zoning-type scenario, you're not gonna get the clustered-type development with a variety of lot sizes. And it's been suggested that, you know, we're building these tiny lots and tiny houses. 8,700 square foot average lot size. We have a ton of lots that are well over, we have like 60, 57 or 61 lots that are over 9,000 feet. So, the suggestion that we're building tiny lots and tiny houses, the, i- is, is just, again, a, a misperception that's been broadcast and rebroadcast, and for some reason, it's gotten traction, and, and that's just not the case. So.
Could I ask a question along those lines?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna make sure you, you're, you're, uh, figuring out what you need to know, and then I'm gonna call on Gary, I think.
Certainly.
I'm, I'm sorry, and, Willie. So, are you, I wanna make sure you're finished up with your question.
I didn't ask it yet.
Um, no. You, you ask if he could speak, and so I'm saying I wanna make sure we finish what you need. So, go ahead.
So, does that mean yes? I can speak to him?
I'm saying, go ahead. I'm saying, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, how committed are you to this, this conceptual drawing that you have here? Because the, as Mike pointed out, it, it, you could have up to 103 of the smaller lots, and counting the smaller lots on that picture, it looks like there's 78 showing. So, how, how committed are you to doing that picture rather than doing 103 of the smaller lots?
I, I think the ratios that were put in the PD were, were put in there based on our understanding of your market study. And, and the housing report that suggested, you know, in the next two to five years, the, these, this is the housing stock that's gonna be required, and we tried really hard to, to hit that and, and offer that blend.
Right. And I, and I read the housing study, and I saw that.
And those are minimums. So, what you see coming out of the plan in reality is, is very different from that. And as you suggested, it's a whole lot fewer than what could be done under the ordinance. And we've got a tremendous amount of time, effort, energy, and dollars invested in this plan. We're not interested in starting over. We're not interested in sort of throwing it out. I'm also not interested in straying too far from what we believe are marketable proportions and ratios. So, I'd be glad to talk to you. What it, what it, you know, you, it's drafted 60/40, and this is the plan that, that's yielding. So, what is it that you think's more appropriate? 50/50?
Well, if I'm not underst- if I'm, maybe I'm not understanding it correctly, because this plan has 78, the one that's on the screen, has 78 of the small lots.
Right.
In the ordinance that we would approve, we can, it would allow for up to 103?
Two.
102 of the small lots.
Right.
So, this plan that's on the screen doesn't look bad at all. But if, how committed are you to keeping that, or are you, are you going, once we grant the zoning change, you can conceivably go to 102 or more potentially small lots, correct?
Well, no more than.
More, okay, no more than.
The ratios are limited to that.
Okay. So, if the white ones showing on there are 78, those are the small lots.
Yes, ma'am.
You could potentially add up to, up to 102, to make that up to 102.
Of the 170 total.
Of the 170 total.
That's correct.
What I'm asking is, you've shown us this picture of your conceptual layout. Are you willing to say that with those ratio of lot sizes that we see on the screen are what you're committing to?
No, this, and.
No?
I, I'll be glad to talk to you about what percentage you think is appropriate, but this is not a plot. This is, is, is a conceptual lot layout that we've spent a tremendous amount of time and effort on, that, that yields some very good information. And it suggests that, under the rules of the PD, we could submit this tomorrow, and your staff would approve it. What I am concerned about doing is straying too far from those percentages, because at some point, we fail to meet the market, and it doesn't do you or me any good to go put something on the ground that the market won't receive. It, it, that's the worst thing for both of us. So, are we willing to negotiate ratios? Absolutely. But I'd like an understanding of why and, and what it is that the goal, and, and that's the one thing that I've, we've never gotten, is what is the goal? And, you know, the size of the houses that we're proposing are at least as big as all of the neighborhoods around us. So, when it's purported that we're building these tiny houses, I don't know where that comes from. I'll be glad to have continued conversations about specifics if we understand what's the purpose, what's the goal, and what are the defining parameters. Once we understand those, we're very comfortable moving forward. We've put a tremendous amount of effort and energy into this. This was not just, you know.
My thought would be perhaps to propose.
Are you, are you, are you getting what you're, and I gotta go with Willie is up next. Uh, okay, Willie?
I thought would be, maybe we would put a restriction of one-third of the lots could be the smallest lot size you propose, and then you work out from there.
Willie, you wanna speak?
I, I just, I just wanna, I'm sorry. I, I've got a, I can't count here but one at a time. I'm calling on Willie right now. I just kinda wanna finish up on what the mem- Councilmember at the end of the die said about what would you do, wouldn't do. One of the issues that I'm gonna make sure we understand all is, is your cost and your participation in the street.
Well, and that's something that the PD allows for, that under straight zoning, unless the TIA says, "Hey, you own 40% of Carter Street," you, but no one is compelled to be.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have that conversation somewhere down the road, so I'm just gonna let you know upfront, and not, not something that's gonna be snuck up on ya. That's why I brought this attention of the street two weeks ago to the city manager, 'cause it was never brought up anywhere where that street was smaller, larger, what your participation was, or not gonna be and the, and the cost of that street. You know what the cost is, and, um, it's gonna be an issue down the road.
Well, and, and I'm telling you, that's something that, again, that's one of the things that nobody's saying here, that you have that opportunity in the PD. In straight zoning, you lose that opportunity. Unless the TIA suggests that, that Carter Street is a direct result to this neighborhood, the ability to, to, um, require the developer to participate in that in any way is, is, is.
I respectfully disagree with that statement.
Okay.
I, I think that's a misstatement. I think our subdivision regulation states that when you develop an abutment of, of, of a city street that's substandard, that a traffic impact can be required to address that substandard street. So that's a misstatement.
The TIA didn't reveal that, though.
I didn't say that. I'm responding to you saying a straight-up zoning would not require a TIA to be done, and that's not true.
Well, if, if that's what you understood me to say, I apologize. That was not, I, I said, unless the TIA dictated that.
A TIA will be required under a straight zoning change. If, if there's no change in zoning under SF nine, our subdivision regulations would require a TIA to be done.
But you're, you're questioning what the TIA would show, is that correct?
Correct. I'm just saying, if the TIA suggested that, he's exactly correct. If the TIA didn't suggest that, then it wouldn't be.
Okay. Uh, Willie, you through?
Yeah, we, I mean, we keep going back to, you know, the TIA that was done by a guy he hired. I mean, uh, I don't think, the city didn't accept it. I didn't accept it, and I just didn't believe a lot of the stuff that was in it. I still don't today.
Can, like, can I ask if we accepted that, or approved it, or thought it was okay? I think I heard that said by Mr. Singleton. What's actually the case?
We did, uh, review the TIA, but of course it was submitted at a time when it wasn't required. And so any changes that would be required to the TIA based on the actual layout that's submitted during the preliminary plat process, not to mention the fact that our subdivision regulations do come into play during that process, which, you know, don't necessarily have to agree with what the TIA says. There, there are, you know, requirements through those ordinances that...
And the subdivision regulations does state that the city manager can require elements to be included more than what's being proposed.
The city council has the final discretion on it.
But, but in the ordinance, the city manager or his designee can set the parameters for the traffic impact analysis.
Sure. Okay. All right, I think, I'm not sure if I, yeah, so are you through? Are you through?
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, I was just thinking, um, Excess Ranch had some big lots proposed, um, and came back to us and said that they weren't really meeting what the market was demanding, that they had to, um, change some of those lot sizes to smaller housing to meet the, um, the demand of the market. And, uh, we said, yeah. We said that was okay, if I'm correct.
That's what I remember, Kay.
Yeah. So I don't see how it's any different for this person than for the Excess Ranch people, to be fair.
Motion on the floor is to substitute for the motion, Willie's motion to deny this, uh, for a motion that Gary has stated that will be to, uh, go back for some more conversation. And we can, we can, uh, read that as Mike has, best has it down.
The motion that was made by Mr. Schiff and seconded by Councilman Gilman was to send the developer back to reconsider the current plan and come back to the city council with some revisions and a better plan than what's being presented tonight.
I, I would, I would just say, for sake of, uh, being, uh, the reason of this would be, if you pass this motion, I would expect to hear some conversation about what it is that you want the city manager to talk to Mr. Singleton about. Uh, if it doesn't pass, of course, it doesn't matter. So it, I, I, I think that, um, let me, Margaret and I just called on you. Do you wanna talk about the subst-, the, the, the motion to substitute, or do you wanna wait and see what happens after this vote?
I have, I have some specific points that I wanted to talk to you.
The, the, the...
I want to address the motion.
So, yeah, why don't you, okay, so I, I promi-, I promise whatever happens, if this motion passes or not, I will let you speak next. Uh, so I think y'all are ready to vote, and the motion, if, if you vote for this motion, then the, Gary's motion is on the floor, not, and no longer is on the floor, Willie's motion. Everybody clear about that? This is not voting to do Gary's motion, it's to put it on the floor, put it on in front of us. And will you call the roll?
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Delarosa?
No.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland? I mean, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, uh, we now have before us Gary's motion, and I think it, as I said, my opinion is it needs, uh, um, it needs some kind of substance behind it. And I'm gonna call on, uh, Mr. Singleton. Will you stand, please have a seat up front? And, uh, if you want to redress any of this stuff at any point, I want you to come up, and you just let me know. Uh, and I appreciate your, your patience tonight. Margaret?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I did want to address specifically the consistency and compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, even though that is zoned SF seven, uh, my lot is twelve hundred square feet. A lot of the lots right along Carter are actually nine thousand square feet. Um, the, the setup with how, um, the fence, the back of the houses are facing Carter, that is completely inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Also, um, I believe we do have the dedicated park funds, um, Chapter ten, Section eight, eight point two oh, eight point two five, dedicated parkland and park trails. Um, I believe there might be some funds available for that. Um, the current comprehensive plan did show that this neighborhood, um, was potential in need for a actual neighborhood park, which the definition of that would include a playground and amenities. If we put that many more houses here, we are even that much more lacking in a park. I think with the SF nine, we would have some options that might not have been clear, but I think the ordinance is clear that there are, um, provisions for parkland in a usable space. On the other side of the creek would not be considered usable space for a park. So, um, I'm just so adamant that we remain consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And please, and also Piney Creek is a public waterway. Uh, that is, um, property of the state of Texas, and we already have rights to the bank. And to tie that into more parkland would be the best thing to do. That's the most applicable use of this land. This is ideal for a park, the more park space we could get, and I would rather take my chances. You know, we have a lot of, um, not sure, we're kind of trying to predict the future of what's gonna happen. I would much rather take my chances with the SF nine and see what we can get with our current regulations in our subdivision ordinance and see how much park we can get. I would much, much rather stay with the SF nine. This is not consistent or compatible with the current neighborhood. Excess Ranch, that is not, uh, the same thing as a current neighborhood. So please, please, please do not do this to us. Do not, and this is not low-hanging fruit. This is the cream of the crop, property. Thank you very much.
I wanna point out to, uh, to you all, this is a very important matter, obviously, to the community. We have a rule about, kind of a thirty-minute rule on agenda. I'm, the mayor can extend that. I want you to know I've extended it a, a lot, last meeting and this meeting. So, uh, uh, the council's been very patient with my doing that, and, uh, I hope you see that as an affirmation of our interest in what the citizens have to say. I'm Marie Blasing.
Hello, um, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Um, I had come up here with a written, uh, statement that was till last three minutes, and I'm sure I won't make it under my three minutes. But, um, and it had to do with a hundred and seventy, whether or not there was a maximum of a hundred and seventy. And I read the, I read the council packet and so forth, and now I do know that there would be, with the PD, the plan development, a, a limit of a hundred and seventy. Um, and so I can't say what I was gonna say before, but I would like to tell Mr. Singleton that it is not an average of eighty-seven hundred, um, square feet, or eight thousand seven, wait, what is it? Uh, there's, let me see. My property is, um, almost a third of an acre. Almost all the properties in Pecan Valley are large lots. Mine is twelve hundred square feet. Uh, there are fourteen houses per block, and they, the, uh, with the, this plan development, there would, the density would be approximately twice what it is in my neighborhood, which happens to be on, my home is actually on Carter Street. Um, but my point, my real point here is, um, aside from asking Mr. Singleton to do his math again, an average, uh, what is it, uh, eighty-four houses at six thou-, on six thousand square foot lots, and fifty-three houses on slightly under nine thousand square foot lots is not an average of eighty-seven hundred square feet. Just do your math. Anyway, um, so, but my main point here is to, um, have you visualize what it will look like with twenty-four houses, twenty-four houses that are on one thousand square foot lots lining Carter Street with only three entrances, and all of them will have their little privacy fences across the back, and all of them will have their dogs in the backyard with their fifteen-foot backyard. These are very small houses, and they, it will be completely aesthetically and culturally different from my neighborhood, which is very ample with, it's very open, and it's very, uh, dissimilar from what is being proposed here. Now, within the interior of the development, maybe that will be fine for them, but the exterior of the development will be basically an eyesore, and I don't think it's fair. And, um, my other point, and, and speaking to, uh, Councilmember Schiff's point, I think it would be better to have six streets because then it will correspond more to the, the character of the neighborhood. And then the traffic issue on Carter Street might be slightly better because not everybody would be tearing down Carter to get to Cedar and turn left to eventually hit the bridge. Um, let me see. My other point, and I think this is a very important point. I don't feel that the city staff has necessarily represented my interest, and, because I had, I'd been trying for five months to get an answer to the question about the hundred and seventy maximum houses.
Is it expired? I'm sorry, Marie, your time's up.
Oh, darn. Okay. Thank you very much.
Robin, Robin Payson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Um, I know many of you, um, on a first-name basis. Uh, I've actually lived in Bastrop for twenty-seven years, and I love Bastrop. Um, and I've known for a long time that it wouldn't stay the way it was, and of course it hasn't. Um, I have been commuting to Austin for quite some years, and there were times in the winter where I would, um, drive in in the dark and drive home in the dark, and then on the weekend I would go, where did that building come from? Because we were changing and growing so fast. And, um, and we're just much, such a pretty town that I knew that growth would be coming. Um, but I really want the council to very much consider the special nature of downtown. I live on seventeen and four Wilson Street, um, and so while this is a couple of blocks, um, north and a couple of blocks towards the river, not, um, I think that, uh, supporting a development, um, my major concern is with the, uh, size of the lot. I, I do think we are gonna be growing and changing, but I think we need to be very cautious about how we grow and what that does in specif-, we, we have a unique area here in Bastrop that, that needs to be preserved. And when I look at the purpose of the zoning ordinance, it says to promote, um, and protect, uh, protect and preserve places and areas of historical, cultural, architectural importance, design to lessen the congestion in the streets, um, ensure adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population, facilitate adequate provision. You know, every single home is gonna have at least two cars. That's three hundred and forty more cars coming in and out on, uh, Carter, Cedar, Wilson, um, uh, parks and public requirements for, uh, it says, "been made with reasonable consideration, among other things, for the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for the particular uses specified, with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the city." I'm just asking that, um, the, again, the, the appearance and size of the lots and the use of the open space be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergio Altervarano?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, councilmembers, uh, city manager. Uh, thank you for the opportunity for speaking tonight. Uh, as a community, we are proud to call us the most historic small town in Texas. Uh, as you will know, Bastrop was named a distinctive destination by the National Trust of Historic Preservation and Joint Sisterhood of towns and cities across the nation accorded this honor in recognition to the city's work to preserve its historic character. I want to make clear that I'm not against the development of this property. I'm fully aware that this property will be developed one way or another. I just want to make sure that the council makes their decision based on, um, more information, much, much of what needed to be discussed. The adopted Cedar Land Use Plan, uh, twenty twenty, follows the current zoning plan, which has it as a SF nine for a reason. Uh, the town was prior to a long conventional grid system, which has marked grown, which is a movement from new barminism. Supporters tend to prefer versus cul-de-sacs for ex-, for excellent reasons. A proliferation of cul-de-sacs are, uh, artificially lengthens walking distances, increases traffic congestion, lessens the connectivity of the area, and biking is less safe. The size of setbacks proposed will lead to a typical suburban neighborhood where the street view is dominated by car garages. The, and the wiring half of the home front elevation to the garage allows only twenty feet of the design space for the rest of the façade. At seventy feet front, the houses, uh, has more street presence and, uh, principles, uh, principles of crime prevention to environmental design can more easily be followed. It also allows single-level homes, uh, which is a consideration for providing housing that can be utilized by handicapped and elderly. Uh, while the proposed development falls outside the form-based code area, the proposed zoning change contradicts the recent passed form-based code, where the intent is to better integrate the city, mentioning the downtown's historic architecture with future buildings, including nearby neighborhoods. Zoning is one of the main tools that the city has to shape and preserve the character of a community. The question for you, uh, the questions for you are as follow. Do you wanna set a precedent in the way the city will be growing, as far as additions to the city will likely to follow this pattern? Do you wanna a city shaped by developers? Does the proposed zoning align with a twenty, forty long-term plan of the city? Is it consistent with the intent of the form-based code approved by the areas out of the tracks? Thank you.
Thank you, Sergio. Uh, Carlos Lariano?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, Mike, um, I'm kinda confused on, on this particular issue because my understanding is that a hundred and seventy-three homes can be built, and the contract, the developer is proposing a hundred and seventy. Since opening Los Pines Toyota, we have grown, and my folks need homes. We have a housing shortage in this community. My folks, some of them are living up in the, uh, trailer park up the road because they can't find, you know, apartments or homes in this community. So if we're able, if this, if planning and zoning has the rules, and they set up the rules and allow a hundred and seventy-three homes to be built in this particular community, we're saying to developer, the bel-, developers like this, come in and build a hundred and seventy-three homes. That's what's allowed. He comes in and wants to build a hundred and seventy, but he wants to do it in a different way. Shouldn't that have been handled by PNC at some point early on in the discussion? Because we need houses. In this process, um, in my opinion, it is, uh, it's, it's just difficult to go through. Uh, if we delay this anymore, uh, you know, just delays the houses being built. I certainly understand the traffic concerns of these folks. I, I don't want additional traffic on the road. The city has to come up with a way to handle that traffic. The city has to come up with a plan on what type of houses they want in these particular areas. areas. If that plan is developed, then the rules will be set for this developer to come in and build according to those rules. I think we're dealing with two different issues here. One, the ordinances that that are set for the for the developer to live by. But if if we go back, if we say no to them and another one comes in and builds a hundred and seventy-three homes, how's the traffic going to be different? I I'm confused with that and I appreciate some discussion on on that. Thank you.
To answer one of your questions, Carlos, we are working on a recommendation of a five to three vote by the Planning and Zoning Commission to grant this change. So they have dealt with it, they have had several hearings, they voted, they sent it to us and now this council's decision to affirm or not their recommendation. Other, anything else? Mike, the I'm persuaded, as I've said a time or two, that this motion doesn't give you a lot of stuff to work on, do you?
No.
Can you get that from councilmembers outside this meeting or you need to hear it now?
I mean, we I think in fairness to the developer, I mean, he's asked a fair question. What what is the alternative? And I don't know if we can accomplish that here tonight or we have a special workshop and discuss that because we've covered a lot of territory tonight and we're still on this one item.
Gary, I mean, you know, it'll it'll stand as it is unless it gets unless we get some kind of clarification. Go ahead.
Well, I would be willing to represent the council, work with the city manager and the developer to try to come up with a compromise plan at least that sounds logical to me if you want to have me as your representative or we can have a workshop with everybody, however you want to do it. We could include, we could include people in the neighborhood, I don't have a problem with that.
Question question is, Gary's offering himself, Willie's saying, should we include others, especially those from the neighborhood in an effort to try to get some details?
Well, you know, who we're trying to represent over here is the neighborhood?
I think that's your point, yes.
And I think Mr. Singleton make did make a good point. I mean, he's been working on this for quite some time and I think either the whole council has to address it or or not because if we come back and you still don't like it, does that mean we go back again? I mean, we've come to a point where either we say we and I'm going to go back to what I said very in the beginning. What's before us tonight is this proposed development on this track of land, is it compatible with the area and the neighborhood? And that's what we should be looking at. And again, I think if the council has concerns and wants to see adjustments, then I think we should set a special council meeting and give the direction and see if Mr. Singleton is in agreement with that because I don't want to go spend three hours and come back and you say, no, we can't, we don't want to do that. We I think we've got a very good understanding of what the citizens' concerns are and so I appreciate the offer, but again, I think in fairness, if we're going to this is what we're going to do, we owe it to Mr. Singleton to meet with him as a collective body.
I I'd like to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just be sure I've got this right? Did the neighborhood come to PNC and express its concerns thereto?
We did, North Ward, overwhelmingly SF nine.
Well, we let me just say that let me ask Melissa, we had a lot of people that talked correct. People from the neighborhood and other places talked at the testified at the hearings and the all the several meetings y'all had at PNC.
Yes, we had the original PNC meeting and then they actually sent the developer back and had a workshop, which the neighborhood was present on that. And that's where they went from two entrances to three entrances and provided more of a landscape easement along Carter Street as well as prior to this plan, they weren't showing, I guess, the larger nine thousand square foot lot sizes, so they modified a mixture of some of the lot sizes in that and that's eventually what this plan is eventually what was from some of those discussions that planning and zoning.
Worked out there at PNC, thank you.
And PNC voted, tell me the vote?
It was five-three and Wesley Remini, correct. The very first plan that they had in September was a hundred and ninety lots, so then they reduced that to what's currently before us today at a hundred and seventy.
So this has been going on since September?
I think, or which they submitted in September, I think we went to October or October PNC and then a November workshop and then December vote or September PNC, October workshop, December vote, like.
December vote from PNC?
Yes, it's they went to PNC three times.
Three times?
Correct. First time, look at it, then a workshop and then another workshop slash vote.
Let me say, Harry there?
Yes.
Let me say that pursuant to what Mike said, if if this motion passes, I'm inclined to call a special meeting next week, whenever we can get it together, have a workshop session and figure it all out and see where you go. That's if this motion passes. Willie?
I'm gonna make two points real quick and I'll let you go, Mayor. One thing that strikes me is this jumps right out and grabs you if you're paying attention, that nobody that lived in the immediate area, north of Cedar, west of Maine, unless I miss something, spoke in favor of this zoning change. So I think one person spoke in that zoning change, but I don't know if that person lives in town. But anyway, having said that, it was just a few months ago in another development, Con Park in a planned development, two neighbors came down here, two neighbors gripped about the small houses and cottage homes and those lots being built across the street from them and yet, and Gary, you led the charge on this one, at the end of Perkins Street when those people came down, two two basically two residents at the end of Perkins came down here and you and you lobbied Mr. McDowell to move those those proposed homes, those small small law homes and cottage homes up away from those neighborhoods. And yet, these people here asking for a zoning change and we haven't listened to them. Just want to make that point clear that they didn't know.
Yeah, I I would just say, I don't think anybody's not listening to people, Willie. I mean, that's just that's just my opinion, but.
You're not listening to the neighborhood.
I'm certainly listening.
Sorry, I mean, you weren't voting, so.
Well, would you say to everybody, please, if you're going to talk?
So.
Me?
No, 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 you have to, please talk to them.
I'm not talking.
Okay, we're, I'm sorry. I, any other conversation? Y'all ready to vote on this? Okay, this, Mike, can you restate the motion?
Yes. Motion was made by Gary Councilman Schiff and seconded by Councilman Gellerman that the developer go back and reconsider the current plan and see if he can come back to the council with a better plan than what's being presented tonight. And that was the motion.
Okay, and the second was made by, I think, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote, Ann, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Delarosa?
No.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember, yes.
That's it, thank you. We will figure out a way to meet next week sometime. The appreciate the patience of everyone who's here for something else besides this important matter. Appreciate your patience for five more minutes while we take a break. We're in recess for five minutes. Chief Adcock? Chief Algelt? I need to round up councilmembers.
One thing I just want, if you didn't know, the police department is going to hold it to a real soon, just so you know, we're trying to play.
So that's, did there be a reason not to do it? I'm calling the meeting back to order. Thank you. We are, we will return to our regular session. We have completed item B one. Mike, we want to move, what do you want to move to now?
I would like to take care of, let me find it.
If you're going to speak, talk, please go outside someplace, appreciate it, we need to be able to hear and hear, we've got television going and all kind of stuff.
I'd like to move up item D seven, Presentation Discussion Regarding the Proposed Public Improvement District for Essex Ranch. We have President Mr. Dan Wegmiller and Mr. Barfar. Dan is our financial advisor and Mr. Far is our bond counsel. In a few weeks, the excess ranch will be bringing documents for council consideration and approval and I wanted Dan and Bart to come down and kind of give you an overview of what you're going to be dealing with and decisions that you're going to have to make. So with that, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. As Mike said, I'm Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance, the financial advisor to the city. The handout that I just gave you is just kind of a update and overview of where we're at today. I think on the the first page, what we highlight is August twenty-fifth of last year, you all created the Public Improvement District. January sixth of this year, we received the Public Improvement District appraisal of the land, which then goes into many of the documents, sizing the the first bond issues, also setting the assessments and the ratios. So we are in the process, as this document states, from January sixth through, we estimate, March twenty-first, preparing various PIT documents, drafts of bond orders, bond purchase agreements, trust indentures. You all have sold bonds many times in the past. The actual selling of the bonds and the process, the documentation used to sell the bonds is very similar to what you've done when you've sold bonds in the past. The difference is there's a lot thicker documents and a lot more detail related to this because it's an assessment revenue bond of the city, not a general tax pledge of rated type security that you've sold before. So between now and March twenty-first, we're working through these various agreements and documents to bring back to you. On the on the second, on the third out of four pages, the process to approve sale of bonds. April fifth is a city council meeting is what we have slated for right now. I think it's important to understand the timelines and the the timeframes here, they're planned, they're anticipated, but they could shift a bit. Part of this process is not as exact as we often go through with your normal bond sale. Everyone's moving as quickly as they can to put the the documents together and and bring them back to you and ultimately try to sell bonds as the schedule lays out, but it's important to recognize that we don't want to put numbers and dates out there too early and start having things changed too much for you. We're working as with your staff, with the consultants for the development to pull these things together. April fifth would be approving a preliminary service and assessment plan, which defines the amount of debt, the projects that are being funded from the the issues. It sets a date for a public hearing and levying of assessments, which according to this schedule would be May third, and then approve a resolution to post the preliminary official statement or the offering document selling bonds. Then come back on the April twentieth, filing a service and assessment plan with the city secretary, publish and mail the notice of that public hearing on the assessments. Again, the assessments on the property are much like a tax that that a mud district and mud districts that exist out there will have. So it's really important to understand that everything into the sizing of the bond issues, the assessments, the developers is concerned as anyone else that the assessments and and the taxes out there are competitive and reflective of market and not to drive potential homeowners away. Finally, May third, city council meeting to approve the bond ordinance and bond documents, hold a public hearing on the levying of the assessments and approve a PIT assessment ordinance with the final service and assessment assessment plan and resolution authorizing PIT agreements. Finally, the the final page that I have here. Finally, the, the final page, uh, that I have here, um, May 3rd, price and sell bonds is the goal. Again, uh, we hope to hit that date, but it could shift. If we accelerate, that's great. If, if we don't, uh, we'll be right around that date, we hope. We submit to the, uh, Attorney General for their approval, like any other bond issue, and they look at it closely. Um, May 23rd, bond closing is the date that we've slated for that, which is, um, when all the funding occurs. Uh, this money will go into a trust, uh, to be managed through the construction and to be, in essence, protected, um, and the disbursements watched carefully. Some of the major points I just want to make regarding a public improvement district, the same points that we made quite a while ago, uh, back before your creation of this. But it's important to understand the PID and the PID debt is debt of the city. It'll show up in your CAFR. It, it, it's a reflection of the city debt, but it's a revenue debt. It's not a tax debt, it's not a water and wastewater utility debt or electric utility debt. It is revenue bonds with the security of the assessment revenues collected off the development. These bond documents that we're putting together right now, that's all part of what it's laying out. Is that the security, and that's why it's not going to carry the same bond rating you all carry as a city. These bonds will not be rated. They'll be, they'll be reflecting the relative higher risk than what a city GO bond carries. These are revenue bonds, the doc, bond documents will be structured to, to set this off and apart from your general credit pledge. Uh, that said, it'll be important throughout the life of this that the city council and the city staff maintain the integrity of that relationship throughout to make sure it never, never comes back against the city other than as a revenue bond.
So is it possible for bonds like this to be, to go under forfeiture?
Yes, I mean, the, the, the provisions are in it, that's part of the reason for the appraisal, is to protect the bondholders and not to over-leverage the property. Uh, so there have been many PIDs issued across the state and, and assessment bonds across the country. The, the key is, um, allowing the structure to, to be as flexible as possible. There's a reserve fund set up for two years, so if something happens, there's a reserve to pay bondholders until the development were to get back on track. The developer has the responsibility to pay the assessments on tracts of land that aren't occupied or owned by anyone else. Um, and, and they're motivated to keep that property and keep those assessments current, um, because then it puts their, their whole development at risk. The, the other part of this that I think is unique, you know, when we've talked about PIDs from the outset, the, the importance of a PID is for something special, unique or specific, in, in my opinion, to the city, to the, the, to the development, to the project. This isn't a, a boilerplate template to develop every project as a public improvement district. And I think this development has a mix of muds where the developer will be fronting costs and getting reimbursed. And this is a special, unique piece of that development, uh, that's using the PID because of, uh, the unique infrastructure required at, at that part. But overall, like any other debt issuance, it, there is a, a, uh, mechanism to protect the investors and to protect you all as far as, you know, if there's a draw on the reserve, you've got two years to, to remedy that, basically.
So what's the dummy version of, uh, my, one of my successors in office, three years after that two-year, uh, reserve is used up? Because the, uh, development goes broke or something?
The, the future developer steps in and, and picks it up. The land is the security, so that is what-
So we could foreclose on the land?
That's exactly right. That's essentially-
Is it worth as much as, as, uh, these bonds?
So, uh, and Bart Fowler can walk through any of the legal aspects as, as far as, uh, to make sure we're, we're covering everything, but that's the point of the appraisal. Now, we, we can all question, well, if the development's going south, is today's appraisal reflective of the future value that it might be? That, that appraisal should, could drop. You're, you're protecting the debt to value by limiting or, or making sure the value on the property is three times what the level of debt is. So you have a margin to see even valuation fall, but still have enough value to, to take care of the obligation on the debt.
Even though we're not putting the money forward, um, we're like in, uh, like a bank, loaning money almost. And we're doing this without any interest of our own in this, but to help the developer. Because the only way this can happen, as opposed to a mud, is through the city doing it. Am I correct?
That's correct. You are in essence, and that's part of the, the many months, as opposed to when you sell your, your own general bonds. It's, it's a 60 to 90 day process. Uh, we've all, including you all, have spent a lot of time discussing this and working through the documents. Because there is a way to protect the city's general credit and make sure this thing's, you know, belted in suspenders as much as possible.
Well, we, we own a rodeo arena, I guess we could own a ranch someday. Uh, questions? Are you, are you still going? I'm sorry, I've-
No, sir.
I mean, you just scared the daylights out of me and what you said, so-
Well, you know, I think it's important because PIDs are, are fairly unique, uh, around the state. They're, they're becoming more and more frequent. And, and I've worked on one in Hayes County recently, uh, we see more of them. And again, I think they're, they're unique to a project and development where the city council, the governing body, has to get comfortable that they're, they're skin in the game, um, on the developer's side before you take this step. And I think that's the important part here is, there's a unique part to this development that calls in for consideration of this PID. And then now it's up to, you know, your staff and, and your consultants to make sure we, we keep this thing structured as it's, it's meant to be. A non-rated, uh, piece of debt that goes out and, and funds this type of infrastructure.
Yeah, Willie?
I don't know if I asked Mike or, or asked you. I'll take, uh-
Page two-
Yes, sir.
In that timeframe, you have January 6th to March 21st, and I guess this word's at the service and assessment plan. Is, is anything changed from the time you spoke to us last time that, what the assessment would be on each lot? Is that something, that's something we don't need to worry about?
Uh, not at this stage. Again, the, the final assessment structure is going to be reflective of what a competitive, and it should be within the framework of what you've heard. Because that number is reflective of the tax rate and the level of assessment that they feel that that development can support. So it, when we come back, we will lay out all those provisions and numbers, um, and, and let you know that from your side, we've looked at it, signed off. And from the developer's side, they're comfortable that it can do what they, they intended to do.
Okay. Uh, Mike, you want to advise us of anything else? I mean-
No, I think, um, you can see that there's quite a lot coming ahead of you. Um, we've been having, um, weekly phone conferences, uh, and we've all tried to attend as much as possible. Sometimes we all don't make them, but we're keeping each other informed. Uh, but, um, with what's going to be coming before you the next several months, I felt that this was important tonight, that you have an idea and not have us just walk in here with a stack of documents and say, approve. So, um, I would encourage you to look at this and if there's any more particular questions, yes, sir?
You call for a special meeting on May 3rd?
Yeah, I, I see these all come off on, uh, odd council dates. I'll be talking to that about that.
Okay, we, we can adjust that? Okay. Um, I want to say something so I'm, I'm subject and not, um- Yeah, it'd be, it'd been, it would have been interesting for the amount of time you needed to talk to us if our crack IT staff had just put you on television and shown you on the screen. So you wouldn't have had to come down here and sit through all this. And, you know, maybe others might benefit from that reflection on my part. So thank you very much for being patient tonight.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, Dan.
You bet.
And Bart, I do appreciate y'all. Y'all, like, again, study these, and if you have any questions on these items, and I'll be working and with John and Bart and Dan and getting these dates more solidified in, in, in line with council meetings.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, do you have an estimate of how long it will take to do B2 and B3?
D2?
B2 and B3?
Uh, it shouldn't take long. This is, I've been before you before, it's just that we've made several revisions to clarify-
Okay, I'll call it. Let me call it. Public hearing, uh, under B2, convict a public hearing to receive citizen input on an amendment to the zoning ordinance, chapter 14, section 36.2, zoning use charts. And A3 definitions relating, no, regulating, the movement of existing buildings, structures, adopting a conditional use permit process within residential zoning classifications for relocation or rehabilitation of such moved buildings. And amend chapter 3, building regulations, uh, article 3.16.002 and 3.16.006, Ms. McCullough. Before you start, am I correct that this, uh, came as an, uh, initiative from one of our boards?
Correct.
That's, or two of our boards?
Yes, it's a combination of the Construction Standards Board, um, met on it, a workshop with it, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission-
So I hope you'll thank them for the, uh, the initiative.
Thank you.
And let's hear about it.
Um, uh, um, the city manager's correct, this item actually came, uh, before us on, uh, November 10th, um, as recommended by both the Construction Standards Board and Planning and Zoning Commission. But honestly, there was a couple of questions regarding the language, and I think we have clarified that now. We went ahead and advertised again, uh, for this, uh, public hearing and, and first reading in the newspaper notification to continue that item. And, uh, with that, item, uh, B2 and B3 are connected. B2 is the public hearing. Again, it, it has remained unchanged, I just think, uh, clarified on some of the language.
Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, uh, don't have any, do we have any, uh, requests for conversa, uh, questions about it? This is one of those speak now or else forever, hold your peace kind of deals, I think.
Right.
Um, I'm not hearing anybody. Any council members have any questions?
I think you're-
Uh, we will, um, I don't hear any things, so we will move from the, uh, public hearing to item B3, which is first reading of an ordinance of the city of Bastrop, amending the zoning ordinance, chapter 14. Section 36.2, zoning use charts and A3 definitions, regulating the movement of existing buildings or structures, adopting a conditional use permit process wherein, within residential zoning classifications for relocation and rehabilitation of such moved buildings. Amending chapter 3, building regulations, article 3.16.002 and 3.16.006, providing a serviceability clause and providing an effective date, Ms. McCullough.
Uh, thank you, council. Again, this would be, uh, redoing the first reading of the ordinance with this revised language. And again, um, as discussed in, uh, November, this would require, uh, conditional use permits for the moving of existing homes, um, it, within the city limits to follow these standards, et cetera.
I've read this in detail and would like to make the motion to approve it.
A second. Uh, got a motion from Kelly, second from Gary, and I think we're ready to vote, Ann.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delarosa?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move to item D8. Mike, uh, you had a request and you want to introduce it?
Yes. D8 is, I did receive a request, uh, from the, uh, official from the, uh, 1832 mark, uh, farmer's market. Um, they want to make a presentation, um, regarding, uh, the farmer's market, um, the farmers regarding the property that, that they rent from the city adjacent to the convention center. I believe Ms. Erica is here to come up and make the presentation.
Well, while they're loading that. Uh, thank you for your time with us. My name is Erica Bradshaw, and I'm one of the founders of the 1832 Farmer's Market. We're here tonight to discuss the future of our market's location on your property and to share some information on the status of our market. First, Dolores Leeper, our Secretary Treasurer, will give you a brief PowerPoint. And, uh, I'm going to then bring up some of the concerns that we heard from last October 15th, um, city council meeting about our market. At that time, uh, Colonel James Natteren, our president, and I will then answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, thank you very much for listening to us tonight. Uh, we're going to do a quick report of our businesses this past year to give you an idea of what you're up, what we are up to. And we opened in May of 2012, and we are a corporation. Oh, I'm sorry, this is my first time, so I'm, thank you. Can you hear me okay now?
That's better. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, our mission includes operating the Bastrop 1832 Farmer's Market to provide Bastrop and the surrounding region with locally grown foods and farm products and a direct farm-to-consumer marketing that serves a diverse population, preserves and promotes our local agriculture. And improves the quality of life in the greater Bastrop County area. We provide a market designed for farmers and artisans, including those who are economically disadvantaged, to sell their farm and ranch products, artisan goods, prepared foods, and other handmade products. Uh, economic impact, uh, local businesses do have an impact in the amount of money that's kept in the city. A series of case studies by Civic Economics shows that for every dollar spent at a large chain store, only 15 cents stays in the area. While locally owned enterprises, such as our farmer's market, retains 30 to 45 cents of every dollar spent in the area. And we also contribute directly to our local economy. In 2011 and in 2015, we spent more than $1,400 resurfacing and repairing the parking lot. Plus, many vendors sell taxable items, and a portion of that sales tax is returned directly to the Bastrop economy. Permits and licenses required to operate the various individual businesses are funds collected and paid directly to the county. And now here's some good news. This is a, a chart of our vendor sales since, uh, 2008. If you look at the very bottom line, the total sales our market has raised through our vendors is $1,395,229. That's an impressive amount of sales. And that's a whole bunch of tomatoes and other veggies sold to thousands of happy customers over the years. And then, uh, we have a brief comparison of other markets similar to the Bastrop Farmer's Market. Uh, both, uh, Flugerville and Dripping Springs Farmer's Markets have, uh, much bigger populations than we do in Bastrop, but their sales are comparable. And most of them are seasonal, whereas we're year-round. The main thing about this comparison is that no market within 100 miles has two markets on one location, as does the Bastrop 1832 Farmer's Market, Tuesday afternoons and Saturday mornings. Community outreach, a lot of you probably don't know the different sorts of things we do to help the community. And, uh, several things. The Lone Star Card Program helps to feed our hungry neighbors, that's the Texas Lone Star Program. Our demonstration and giving garden donates hundreds of pounds of fresh food to the Bastrop Emergency Food Pantry every year. We also help the Friends of the Bastrop County Animal Shelter directly by having doggy adoption days, and we also do other fundraisers to help them. We also help the Bastrop Cats Anonymous TRN Society. And we just had the, uh, Cool Cats Chili Cook-Off at Market. And we helped them raise almost $1,700 to help their, their, uh, animal care. And we also sponsor the Annual Harvest Art Fest, which brings in about 40 vendors over a two-day period, uh, right after Thanksgiving, bringing hundreds of people to the market. And adding a lot of money to the economy in terms of overnight stays and restaurants and all that good stuff. And we have continuing education at the market. We have a cooking demo every month to demonstrate what's in season. Like January is National Soup Month, and so we preview three different soups that are tasty. And we also, uh, offer a book and magazine, free lending library, free ice cold water, and just a whole bunch of things we do to help the community and educate people. And then we have a number of business memberships, such as the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, the Smithville one, the Department of Agriculture, the Certified Farmer's Market Program they do. And then the Go Texan Program, the Texas Farmer's Market Association, which gives us the liability insurance, or we pay for the liability insurance we need to be at the market. the market. And then we're a member of the Farm and Ranch Freedom Association. And we have a number of ways that we're advertising trying to get the word out. We have a website, a Facebook, a Facebook group, Twitter, Pinterest, and we also advertise locally in Dine Shop, local magazine, The Advertiser, The Times, Edward Austin, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we stay busy. And, thank you, I'm done.
Thank you.
How could I turn this off?
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Well, I was gonna make another little statement because, and then take questions from you, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Good, awesome. First, let me explain how our market is structured. Because of the membership with our Texas Certified Farmers Association, we must maintain a 51% agricultural production vendor membership, which limits the amount of specialty vendors we can have at the market. So we do not limit the membership of farmers or, membership farmers except in the instances of, we have turned down a few multimillion dollar corporations with huge wholesale accounts that have wanted to compete with the small, family-operated farmers. We do not feel like that is being on a fair playing field and we had the right to make this decision, so if you've heard that we've been turning people down, those are the only farmers that have ever been turned down at our market. I've also heard that, you know, we limit what our farmers can grow. All farmers at our market grow whatever crops that they choose. We are painfully aware that the current bumper crop can be wiped out in less than a week from inclement weather, insect infestation, or diseases. And knowing this from years of experience, it would be detrimental to the well-being of our market to limit anyone's production abilities and we don't. Second, I've also heard that there've been questions and criticism as to why we don't have multiple meat vendors. Meat providers are handled a little bit different than the farmers are, specifically because of the high cost of production and the processings that they incur. First, unfortunately, we have no chicken vendors, it's not from our choice. There are no processing plants for chickens within 150 miles of this area, just outside of Dallas is where they would have to go. So if we ever find one, we would take them in happily. They cannot be processed at the same plants that beef, pork, and deer are done and therefore it's a very much a specialty item and it's a lot of expense for them. And as far as beef considers, we have done a considerable thinking and we added a second beef vendor recently. Now, our original beef vendor had eight years to develop a strong client basis and the instability of our market and the desire to grow compelled us to agree it was time for this move. Unfortunately, this resulted in our first beef vendor leaving under protest, because things don't always turn out the way you would like them to. So out of fairness, we will give our new beef vendor time to establish a customer base and then we will try again to bring in another beef person, hopefully keeping both of them this time. Then there's pork vendors. Pork producers have some of the highest costs in agriculture, expensive, highly fortified fencing and feed costs are considerable. Our current pork vendor, the husband had to go into Austin just to make ends meet because there isn't that big of a market in the Bastrop area for it, thankfully leaving his wife Kelly with us to provide the public with their high-quality pork products. And if we even considered bringing in a second pork provider before they had time to become established and get in the black, Kelly would join her husband in Austin and we would again be out from our pork. So there's reasons why we handle things the way we do. We've also heard criticism that we're not letting in people that are wishing to take advantage of these new cottage laws. If you're not familiar with those, you can bake from your home now and provide these to the public as long as the products that you have do not need any temperature control. It sounds like a wonderful idea, but the people that are already providing foods there have got licenses, commercial kitchens, and have a lot of money invested. We already have four vendors with baked goods, prepared foods, and we have recently added a candy vendor bringing in a new and different items to the table. If you have breads, cookies, and cupcakes at every other table, it would benefit no one. All responsible markets set limits to the specialty peoples that they have in there, which unfortunately sometimes limits the amount of vendors that you're gonna have at your market. A perfect example of this is having a bookstore downtown. If a second one moves in right across the street, all of a sudden you have two people, bookstore number one is down a little bit in sales, but you can handle the two bookstores. Then a third person decides they're gonna come in with a bookstore too. So one and two have got their sales down even more, you have three there, somebody's probably gonna leave and you're gonna end up back with one, maybe two, bookstores. You have to take into account what you have to work with. Responsible management dictates recognizing the demographics of your community to set the limits of who you have in the market. We have followed this philosophy in all our aspects of running this market, coupled with what we have learned from trial and error, and to try to keep this a fair and well-run market. Keeping in mind that you can't please everybody, I think we've done a pretty good job. Our sales numbers and our customer base seem to back this up. And lastly and most important, which you haven't addressed yet tonight, is our location here in the city. A Farmer's Market has been on this general location for almost 14 years and our greatest wish is to keep it here, it in the recognized location of the market by most of the people of Bastrop. You know, we fully understand your need to bring in a revenue from this valuable piece of property. Mr. Talbot and I have discussed a few options that might keep this location for us on a part-time basis and I'd be happy to discuss it with you, but we can't tell you how grateful we've been for the eight years we've been in this building. Any other market would give their left arm to have a roof over their heads. It is more convenient not only for the vendors, but for the comfort and the safety of your customers. We were in an Austin market when one of the tents blew over and hit one of the customers, it ended up being a multimillion dollar lawsuit from a little tiny cut, so there is a comfort factor in there and we have appreciated it more than you could know. And we just want to keep a well-working relationship with you guys in the city. So that's really all I had to say. Charles will come up and join me, our President, and if you, oh, there you are, come on, Charles. And any questions you have, between the two of us, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Let me, let me ask you some questions. I loved your presentation on the screen, I mean, it sounds like y'all have a great organization, it's a great benefit to the community and I hope we can keep you here in the community. Your business model, I kind of have some concerns about. Do you lease that property, do I, you lease that property by the month?
It's a month-to-month lease.
How much do you, how much do you pay per month for that lease?
It was given as a dollar a month lease, but we pay commercial rates for the utilities, we keep up the property, the grounds, and we pay for our own traffic.
You use that building to store stuff in for your four hour, or your eight hours a week?
We've, we just left it in there in between our markets.
Okay.
We understand if something changes, we would not be able to do that anymore.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Please.
I just had one quick one. Do you limit the number of like tomato sellers, produce sellers? I've been there, I have to say, it's been, it's been a while, looking for tomatoes or looking for corn or something and been told, oh, our tomato vendor is sold out. Do you have one?
No, Andy, that's why I said in here, any farmer can grow any products they want.
So you don't limit it to only one guy selling tomatoes, one guy selling corn?
No, there are times when we have so many tomatoes, people are taking them home and feeding them to their chickens and three weeks later, not a single person has a tomato left in there depending on what happens. So absolutely not, everybody, as I said in here, can grow anything they want, anytime they want.
Okay.
If I may, I'd like to add something. This is last in an email that I got from a lady that was at the Chili Cook-Off and I won't read. She talks in the first paragraph about how good our vegetables were, she said, "I wish that I lived closer northwest Austin where she lives, so I could come over out every week. Your produce is not only beautiful, but very healthy and delicious. Thank you for doing what you do. I know that farming is a difficult life. Sincerely, Andy."
Thank y'all very much.
No more questions, really?
Andreas, can you, Andreas, can you put something up on the screen? We're, thank you very much, we're in Item D1, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the renting out of the property west of the Bastrop Convention Center. We talked about this quite a number of months ago, we just never have done anything about it. And a couple of council members asked me about it, so I decided it's time for us to actually do something. And there's one for, well, I'll get one to Ann. I, I hope that what I'm laying out provides the opportunity for y'all to continue what you're doing, except maybe using the building for storage all the week. But I think that we have a valuable piece of land over there, we've talked about it many times, I don't think I need to repeat too much about that. So I'm just gonna propose this, this motion and this resolution, if anybody's interested in moving it, we can talk about it, if not, we'll, we'll stop. Or if it is a motion, second, I mean. And it goes like this, we're, yeah, see, y'all can see it there, I hope. Be it resolved that the City Council instruct the City Manager to give notice to the appropriate representatives of the Bastrop 1832 Farmer's Market Organization, that we will end their lease in 60 days from the notice, and be it further resolved that the City Manager develop within 60 days a vendor and lease program for use of the city-owned law between the convention center and the railroad tracks at a fair rate for short-term use for social, civic, business, and personal uses that are deemed appropriate by the City Manager. Is there anybody interested in making that motion? Okay, we'll move on to Item D2.
Ken, can I also ask you, would you please put this stuff in the packet and not just the cover sheet? Because we, we may have had some other discussion or, you know, it just said, talking about leasing the land, but you didn't say anything about what, what your motion was gonna be. I think this stuff needs to be in the packet.
Yeah, I think if somebody wants to, you've got it, I'm trying to provide some leadership, so it's out there, if somebody wants to bring it back up, I'll put it on the agenda and we can put that in the packet.
I'm just talking about, in general, when the packet is prepared, this stuff should be in there, the resolution should be in there.
Well, I'll tell you, I wanted to talk about it and come up with a resolution, but after our conversation on Saturday, where everybody said, we don't know what's coming, we needed something written down clearly, I wrote it down clearly and brought it to you, and I asked Andreas to put it on the screen.
I, excuse me, I think what was meant, that in the, in the interest of transparency, that what we should be doing is putting information in the pack, so when people go online, they can read what that's actually gonna be about.
I, I'm saying that that's, you've got an opportunity to do that in the future. We, we, there's nothing in there we haven't talked about four or five times in this council, I'm just finally put it down in a motion that could be passed. But I'm hoping that somebody will pick up on this, think about it, ask me to put it on the agenda, put something like this in the packet, and then we'll have what you want. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah, but is that how we're gonna go from now on? We'll put it in the pack and put nothing behind it and then the next time someone can bring it up, or, I mean?
I think that, I think that's, if y'all, if somebody had moved it, we could have talked about it tonight, but I'm hoping, because I think this is a good idea, that somebody will take another tack at it and if, if we had had, if, well, no, 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 I'd rather wait, I think there's, I don't think there's much interest in that tonight, Willie, but I hope y'all will think about it. We've, we've...
I thought that was the direction the council wanted to go.
Willie, please turn on your mic when you talk. So we, no, I, I think that was the direction, so I, in terms of, I can't argue about the transparency thing, so I'm hoping somebody picks up on it, that can actually make a motion and puts it on the, on the agenda. Item D2 is, we've had some discussion in public about this and a lot of discussion, I think, outside in the community. I'd just like to give the council a chance to discuss the presence of three council members on the Bastrop Economic Development Board. So it's just a discussion, give you a chance to talk about it? Any, we have, do we have any citizens that signed up for that, Ann? Okay, floor's open.
I've heard a lot of comments that the Bastrop, Bastrop Economic Development Board is a mini-city council, there's too much council presence, that council business is being discussed there, that the topic of the conversation also often goes to city business, even when the subject is BEDC business, and it, and it would seem to me that there must be something we can do to, to limit city business being done at BEDC. It seems to, there's a boundary issue there.
Well, I think as a member of that board, I appreciate you're making a list of what you think that's, or ask citizens to let us know where they think the city's doing that. And I will pass that on to the Chair and ask him to try to monitor that if it's happening.
Well, I think the YMCA project is a good example, and I realize that both entities are involved and so there is going to be some overlap, but after, I couldn't attend the meeting, but I watched it, the recording of it, and several times, the non-council members of the BEDC said, yes, but that is the city's, city's purview, that is, you know, that's something the city needs to decide, we need to talk about primary jobs, we need to talk about the BEDC portion of it, and it kept getting off the subject. And frankly, it looked like a mini-city council, it looked like a practice for what was gonna happen the next night here. And that, I'm not the only person who, who noticed this, lots of people have said that to me.
I've got that example, do you know of any others, or have you heard of any others?
Not off the top of my head, but that's a major one.
Well, I will pass that on to Steve and if you think of any others or any citizens wanna pass that on to me, I will share it with Steve.
How do you think it runs over there since you, you're over there?
I think that at that meeting you're talking about, there was a couple of times or some things that were, the City Council had to decide, you know, were mentioned, and I think I said at least four or five times, this is for, that's for the City Council to decide, not for this, for this board. This board is gonna decide whether or not it wants to put $700,000 in this operation, that's all it should be talking about. That's indeed what Sean came up and reported to us about it and I, I think it's, I think we should stick to what we're doing. I think, I don't think that we decided city business, I think some people tried to mention it, but I don't think we did anything about it, I don't think we made any decisions, it is a City Council's decision. I think that I appreciate the sensitivity to it, glad to hear it, and I'll ask Steve to pay more careful attention about it as one of the members of that board, okay?
I'd just like to say that there are three members of council on that board, which means that if, if a tie had to be broken on council, the majority of council members will have discussed the subject, made some decisions at BEDC about what they think about a particular subject, and then we'll come back to council and vote on it. And that's, that's not putting the information out in front of the public, so the public can hear it at a City Council meeting where they think they're going to come and hear City Council information if it's already been discussed at BEDC. And then council members come perhaps with their minds made up or without having to discuss it in front of people at City Council. So I think there are far too many members on the BEDC that are council members. Either we need to have, in my opinion, just, just one council member there, which should be the mayor, in my opinion, or we need to make the other council members that are there ex officio members who do not vote. That's my opinion.
I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about lessons learned because the, the citizens put me on the, on the board, but the council put the other two, you know, on there. So, but I, I certainly do think, I had somebody talk to me about a bylaw change that might be proposed at the BEDC, but the council can make that initiative too, the council would have to approve it anyway, so there's a bylaw changes. Well, Kay just mentioned one, you know, or you could, you know, you could do anything, you could just say, you know, you know, you can't be a council member. We, both, both the council members that are, besides myself, that are on this board were on the board when they were elected by the citizens, so I'm assuming the citizens knew pretty well that they were already on that board, so, you know, and that's the kind of stuff that, you know, that I would weigh. But I think that, that there's every reason in the world for anyone to take the initiative to, to change that. I would certainly welcome an agenda item for that, Doc.
I just wanted to bring to the point, sure, there are three council members that are on the BEDC, but only two of them actually vote in City Council. The mayor only votes if there's a tie, so in actuality, you have only two voting members on the City Council that vote, since the mayor cannot vote unless there is a tie, so you have three members, but only two voting members during City Council.
So Ken, are you saying that we could, as a council, ask the BEDC to make a bylaw change, or do they have to bring it to us?
I think you could initiate it yourself, I think it works both ways. Am I wrong? I think, I take it back, you could, then you're correct, you could ask the BEDC to please consider. You could ask the BEDC to please consider. So we have to pass it to approve it. I'm sorry. It has to be passed by BEDC and approved by us. There you go. And the other way you can change it is by the appointment and confirmation process.
So you initiated this item on here, so something must have triggered it. What was that?
I've heard some council members talk about it several times at council meetings, and I decided, and somebody told me, a lot of people were talking about it around the community. I thought, everybody's talking about transparency these days, and I thought, let's get it out in the open, talk about it. I mean, I'm sensitive about it, because I chose to run for office, and the citizens put me on the board, and I appointed Gary and I appointed Willie, and they were approved by the council. So I, you know, I'm always looking for opportunities to improve myself if people want to criticize me. That may be one of them.
How many council members are allowed to be on the board?
Three. Four by state law, three by our bylaws.
Yes.
So we're at the maximum now?
By our bylaws, yes.
So the bylaws would have to be changed to have four on there?
No, yes.
Yeah, sure, yeah, you could legally go to four.
Yeah, legally you can go to four.
Statute, whatever the word is, statutorily. Thank you. We would not be defying the legislature by having four.
You can be more restrictive, you just can't be more liberal.
You can't be more restrictive. You can be more restrictive, you just can't be more liberal and say, five members of the council can serve on the board. Statutorily, the statute says no more than four council members can serve on the 4B board.
But we couldn't possibly do that, because that would mean more than a quorum over there, is that right? So we are at our maximum now legally?
Just figure something out.
So is, it feels to me, and many other people that I've spoken with who have actually come to me and talked to me about this, that if BEDC is supposed to be an independent entity, how can it be independent of council and come up with its own decisions if three of its members are from the council?
Here's my answer to that.
Okay.
My answer is, I'm very capable of wearing different hats. I've got so many roles that I play in the culture and in the life of this community. I don't ever have any trouble focusing entirely on what I'm doing at that moment. When I'm at the BEDC, I'm thinking like a BEDC person. When I'm here, I'm thinking like a council member. You know, when I'm, when I was on the library board, I thought like a library board member. And I just think that that's endemic for leadership. I think we can all do that. We set our minds to it. That's my answer.
I would support you keeping your vote on BEDC. I think you're capable of doing that. I'm a little less confident that regular council members are not, in essence, voting twice on a project, if we are. Voting there on the EDC portion of a project and then voting here on the city portion of a project, they're sort of weighing in two times.
It's built into the system.
Yeah.
You know, we, for example, the city council has to approve the budget, has to approve every item over $10,000. If there's bylaws changes, have to approve those. If there are appointments, have to approve those on the board. Sure, I mean, that's built into our system. If we don't want it in the system, then we have to change it. Anybody else? But, okay, okay.
So what you're saying is, if somebody on this council gets off BEDC and someone on BEDC chooses to run for council, then that person would stay on BEDC automatically?
Well, till their term was out.
Till their term was out.
On BEDC, they're always two-year terms.
So that's...
You never have a very big carryover. But you can also change that.
Pardon?
You could also change that. You could, I think, build that into the rules somehow or other, or you could look at it. I don't know. I'm, you know, I'm not sure exactly how the law would work on that, but maybe you could figure that out, where you, you know, you didn't allow both to be or whatever. So, I mean, but I think if you're, you know, I think anybody interested in making the change, you know, can research it and go from there.
Well, I'd like to suggest that the BEDC visit it and let us know what they think. I mean, if they, they are capable of operating independently. If they believe they're being too influenced by council members, I'd appreciate knowing that. And if they think it's a fair ratio the way it is and they're not being too influenced, I'd appreciate knowing that too, either way.
So one of the things you would ask is, does the BEDC feel like their bylaws are need changing, especially in regard to having, at the current time, the maximum number of city council members on the BEDC board?
Maybe it's not the number, but the vote. Maybe they're happy with three council members, but two are ex officio and the mayor votes. Something, I mean, put it to the BEDC and let them decide. They are well capable.
I will...
Let us not forget when we're doing that, that three of those votes will already be on the city council.
I'll refer that to, I'll ask Steve to put that on the agenda, yeah.
I don't think y'all heard me when I, I mean, if you said, if you're saying what you said, Kay, I don't think you heard what I said earlier.
I get to vote on BEDC, though, that's...
Right, but...
I heard you. I'm just saying, if there's, if it had to go to a tie, there would be three people, that's what I said earlier too. If it had to go to a tie, there would be three people who were voting. The mayor would vote.
I also get to vote on the BEDC board, which would be pertinent to what you said. So there would be three council members that could vote on the BEDC about something. Anybody else? Thank y'all for your honesty. Item D3 is regarding Jimmy Crouch. I'm assuming y'all read my letter, and, you know, the whole point of this is that we had a snafu about, I told you I thought he had resigned, but he hadn't. The Chair of Construction Standards wants him back on that board. He's actually still on the board. I could make him resign and then reappoint him, or if y'all are okay with the status quo, which is he's actually on there, because we don't have a resignation by an accidental miscommunication, I'm good to go. So, but I don't want to do that without, because I've misrepresented what we did when you appointed him to the Parks Board. So, well, if you're okay with it, just let it go. But if you want me to do something...
He's still serving on the board.
You want me to do something different, I'll have him resign and then reappoint him.
Can I ask a question about that, though? When you asked him to resign, did you have somebody else in mind you wanted to put on there?
Yes.
And then what happened?
The Ethics Commission prohibited me from putting her on there.
Got it.
I didn't ask him to resign to put her on there. I asked him to resign because he wanted to serve in some place, and then right after that, a Parks Board, and I said, Jimmy, I just need you a lot more on the Parks Board than I do on the Construction Standards, even though he's well-qualified for both. Meanwhile, Charles Schrader has said to me, please get him back on there somehow. He's one of those rare people, I think it's an exception to the rule about only having a person on one board. So I'm going to, Anne, let that mistake be a happy mistake, and we'll correct the membership on that board.
Did we have other people that applied for that board that haven't been considered or for the Parks Board?
Well, it came out the other day. We have David Moore that took his name off, and we had, do we have somebody else on there? We all got an email about it. So if you want me to, I mean, I'll just, if that's a hangup, I'll...
We just talked about diversity on boards and...
We received an email, we received an email in the last two or three, in the last few weeks about the vacancies and the applications.
I don't recall if anybody was interested in that board.
But I'll be willing, if it's a problem for y'all, I'll go back to the other plan, have him resign and start over.
I don't know that...
I was just trying to say...
I'm just wondering if there's anybody else that has expressed interest in it.
Let me say, if there is anybody else, I'm going to appoint him.
Oh, if there's, even if other people want to be on that board, you would like to...
Jimmy's the best person for that job. I've just thought it through, and Charlie Schrader just convinced me I need to put him back on, or try to put him back on there if y'all approve.
And you want to keep him on the Parks Board, too?
Correct. Sounds like I better ask you to resign and start from scratch. Take it back. We'll ask him to turn in his resignation, and then I'll appoint him at the next meeting.
All right. Mr. Mayor, we need to pull D4, and we'll resubmit that at the next council meeting.
Okay. Item D5, we, I don't think, Mike, we don't really have anything we want to deal with left over from the retreat. And that concludes our business, as far as I can tell. And I'm going to look to the right for a motion.
I just have one request.
Oh, wait a minute, we've got a question.
And this relates to an item on the agenda. We will be calling a special council meeting to deal with that zoning change item, and if there is items that you would like to be addressed regarding the plan that you would like to see adjusted, I would encourage you to get your thoughts into me so I can try to get them organized, to have a flow of good conversation between the developer and the council.
When do you need that, Mike?
By Friday.
By Friday.
Soon as possible, I would say.
Move to adjourn.
We've got a second down here, too. Call the row, please.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa? Councilmember Schiff?
I'll stay and talk to you, Willie. Where the passes, we adjourn.